Do we have any new employees? Nope. All right. How about future work meeting topics?
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we'll be talking about remodel of the community service center. If there's any portions remaining, I'm not, I don't remember the exact what's being used and what's not being used. It would be nice to talk about. Daycare center with the remaining space at a future work session.
We'll remind Tom and go from there. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I agree. We have a P I O employee, correct? So I was just wondering if we can kind of get an update on that, on the status of that position and maybe some of the. Some of the, what the job.
Responsibilities.
Yeah, because I often see on Facebook, you know, that, you know, things are being issued through the sheriff's office. So I'm just kind of wondering, are we going to be using the sheriff's office Facebook page to disseminate your information? Or are we gonna use some sort of official Beltrami County? Means of communicating rather than, you know, the sheriff's office. So maybe some sort of update on that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I have agreed to him. I think that'd be good for us to get updated as well. I do know that right now it's pretty low key. Because Chris is still doing both positions. And until he gets somebody hired for the nine one one supervisor position, he doesn't really have the time to really jump in with both feet yet. So. But I think that, you know, it'd be good to get an update on where are things at with getting that that other person hired and that kind of thing.
Yes.
AI, artificial intelligence. If you'll just indulge me for a minute here, the National Association of Counties has created an exploratory committee. And their purpose is to explore the emerging policies, practices and potential applications and consequences of artificial intelligence. Through the lens of county government, governance, operations, constituent services, innovation, public trust, privacy, security and workforce productivity. New artificial intelligence systems have. Catapulted the use of advanced computer technologies within society at unprecedented speed and scale. Embodding more knowledge than at any other time in human existence. As noted recently in The Economist. AI brings a mixture of excitement and fear. That should be explored in depth and with urgency by America's county officials. So I was just wondering if maybe Kevin from MIS or somebody within the next, you know, couple of months, no immediate rush on this could. You know, kind of talk about what's. What's new and what may be coming for the county to deal with in in the near future here. So. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we'll move on then to the Beltrami County Historical Society update. And Emily, right?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Administrator Barry, thank you so much for having me today. Again, my name is Emily Thaves. I'm with the Historical Society. And you had me here just not too long ago to give you an update about the Historical Society and share a little bit about our. Early plans for the bicentennial and then you generously gave us $7,000 so that we could put this thing off. So I just wanted to give you a brief update just ahead of the bicentennial, which is this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. To share with you a little bit about what we have planned. We will be starting the morning on Saturday at Buena Vista ski area with a 5K family fun run. And part of the funds that we used were to create some lawn signs that have a history of Jacomo Beltrami. There are 15 signs that will go along that 5K. So people could participate in that history walk at any time during the day. We have speakers from Rivers Edge Geographics, as well as Floyd Buck Jordan, who's the former chairman of Red Lake. Will be joining us as well to talk about the history of Red Lake Nation. And then we will actually be doing a Google virtual session with the Civic Museum in Bergamo, Italy. That houses the Beltrami collection. We have selected 10 items that are in that collection that have not been in the United States since 1823. Many of those items are Ajiway and Dakota, and we will be sharing those items live at Buena Vista with our community. We also have several children's programs planned for that day, including two programs with the Science Museum. A storytime with John Eggers, and then we've invited some voyagers along to do a reenactment for us. Artisans will be on site both days. As we move into Sunday, we have a speaker from Dr. John. Welly from the University of Notre Dame will be joining us first, followed by Cesare Moreno from the Smithsonian Institution. They both share a love and deep interest in Beltrami and will be sharing presentations about about him. And then we will be joined by Associate Supreme Court Justice Anne McCaig. Who will be donating a replica of the Beltrami flute to the museum. Beltrami took a Native American flute back with him to Italy. It is the oldest known wooden Native American flute. And that replica will be in the museum. And shortly after that dedication, it will be played by musician Jean Romer. In a concert that he will perform along with Mike Tangan and Anne Humphrey. So we have. An extraordinary two days of programming planned because of your generosity and the generosity of others, we were able to keep our admission prices. Still relatively low. It is the same as our regular museum admission. So $7 for adults and $3 for children. And then we have tribal senior and veteran discounts available. If you just flip your poster over, you can see we I did put it together just a little bit of a budget. Just to share with you how the money has been spent. So in addition to the $7,000 sponsorship. Sorry, that should say Beltrami County instead of City of Bemidji. I apologize. I will correct it and send a correction out. Like, wow, that's a big mistake. So, yeah, so the county gave us $7,000. We also received a little over $2,000 from other business sponsors and then $1,450 from individual contributors. So just over $10,000 in donation would help us to meet our proposed budget. We have spent or plan to spend rather some money on chair rental, marketing and so on. And around $2,500 in speaker fees. And so our total event planned expenditures are just under. On the amount of money that we brought in around $9,000. And then we have separately spent around $2,400 on new chairs and AV equipment for the museum. And while we will be using these for the bicentennial, we hope that they'll be around for quite some time for us to use for future programming. And certainly we expect some additional income from buttons, which are sort of these pre-admission sales. 5K registrations, our regular admission donations and merchandise sales. So sorry for the error on the budget form. And again, thank you very much for your donations and happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the family health remodel.
Commissioner.
Yes.
A quick question. Tom, where did the money come from?
Thank you, Commissioner Sumner, for the question. The money came out of Strategic Align Management. Yep.
All right.
Hi, Commissioners. Thanks for taking time with us today. Let me appear with Anne and Amy and Monica here. We're here to talk to you about the Community Service Center Family Health Remodel Project. I do have a few more things, just a couple of things to pass out here. Yeah. That would be wonderful. Should be one for everybody there. Should be one for everybody. So Commissioners, I drew the short draw so you get to listen to me first. I wanted to talk a little bit about the construction project, the construction piece. As you know, we have a budget of $621,000. That's Health and Human Services. COVID funding and such. That really drove our construction project. Originally, our project came in severely over budget. And we had to go back to the drawing board and scale it back. We had to pull out the items that we really thought would best fit the need for the family health area. When we did that, we did come in at a project total that meets our budget of 621,000. We have, we did receive a bid from construction engineers and a cost of 556,308. We've got some furniture in there for some cubicles. And then architectural engineering costs. And then we have a contingency fund. It is a fairly minimal contingency fund. It's one of the. Smallest ones I've had as far as percentages on a project in quite a few years. But. We have worked with this particular company, construction engineers on numerous projects. And we have been extremely successful in all of those projects to. Really not obtain but very minimal change orders. So they are very, very good at adding what they need into their bid and not coming back for change orders for every little thing. So. Which which obviously helps us budget for the project. So. So we did put in some contingency funding in there. That's 20,692. It's about three and a half percent. So typically, we're in that five to six. Seven range dependent upon what the project is. So. Another thing to keep in mind is that out of that 556,000 for construction engineers. About approximately 60,000 of it is prevailing wages. So this is with the use of state and federal funding, we are required to use prevailing wages on our projects. So I thought that kind of interesting to know and to pass on to you today. Just so you're kind of aware that there's a that does increase the project cost when we do obtain state funding. And we do a construction project with that state funding. So. As far as the project itself, we're, there's a fair amount of money in the mechanical, electrical plumbing. The things that you don't really see a whole lot. But we are getting, I did send a floor plan with the agenda bill. And we are adding some significant improvements to family health that that our hopes is that it'll fill that need for many years. And I'm not going to talk anymore about that. I'll leave that up to Amy and Anne. But did you have anything on the construction side of it that I can try to answer for you?
John? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Steve, are these different colors? What color is going to be the one that's still going to be empty?
That's that's gonna be, let me see.
The light green?
That that will be the tenant two, the light green.
Tenant two or tenant one? Tenant one and two?
So it's gonna be the light green tenant one, pardon me.
Okay.
This would be the, we would still have, and the reason why I did this, because I wanted you to know what was still yet available to be leased out. Because I think one of you had a question on that just just earlier today. So. But yes, Commissioner, to answer your question, that that remaining space would be 5,020 square foot. That would be able to be leased out. And we are actively looking at leasing that out and being actively advertised for that space to be leased out. I know we're getting off topic a little bit, but just want to make you aware of that. So.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you. I'm just wondering about when you said you scaled it back, is there like? Sections of this green area that were in the original that are not in it now? Or how did you scale back the the budget? You said it was quite over budget. How did you get it in within our budget?
We did not, we did not change the square footage. So we kept the same footprint as the original design that came in over budget. We just pulled out the sections. We just remodeled certain areas of that. We still retain the original plan, the overall plan. So say 10 years down the road. With their money comes in and and you decide that we want to look at it for continuing that project and family health. We can look at it at that time. We feel that this handles the need for right now. But yeah, just to answer your question, Commissioner. We took certain specific areas and and those are the areas we focused on. So but we didn't, we didn't change the square, the actual square footage of it.
Like I think this upper corner here was like seven or so cubicles or something on the old one, maybe?
Yep. And it and it still is. It still will be part of that, except for like, for example, one of the cost saving measures is. We had was 50,000 in furniture for cubicles. So cubicles. Two years ago were about 3,500 to four grand a piece with everything on there and everything. Now they're six and a half. And so. So we're reutilizing the existing cubicles. We're just relocating them to that corner space, that that northeast corner that you're talking about.
Okay.
And so and then we're going to purchase. A couple of new ones that will allow us to to fill that. So we'll have six cubicles in there. And then we have a room available for a seventh. For future expansion down the road if it's ever needed. So.
Okay. So same square footers that we looked at and did the walkthrough, just trimmed furniture and stuff like that to get within budget. And that was enough to get within the budget.
Cut out some, we cut out, we relocated our kitchen area to where it would be. Still functional, but closer to some of the main plumbing runs. And that was a, that was a pretty significant cost reduction there. We took out a washer and dryer that was planned to be in there. We removed that from the project because we wanted to have a stackable washer and dryer for for as far. And Amy and I can talk more about this, but it's from their client, learning, family learning. Area for a multi-purpose room. We had it's had a stackable washer and dryer scheduled to be in there. We we cut that out. So there was things that we just made cuts on that, you know, we 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 felt that we could and still meet the needs for the future. So.
What was the total amount that we had to cut on our ground or more?
No, it was a lot. It came in at 1.2. So we cut 50% off this project.
And still were able to keep it in the same footprint. Wow.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
We have not had the opportunity to increase family health space for well since the bill and the bill. Because we have had, we had ECFE from Bemidji School District for 20 some years and then Awara, AWCL. Been there for the last few years. So this was our, if if there is an opportunity, this would be the first opportunity that we've had. To expand family health space.
Thank you. As far as I remember, being on the board, this has always been a request. Is that we expand this area because it was just too small. So I'm glad that you were able to find those cuts.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I guess first question, where is the money coming from again?
Public health was granted six, while it was over 700,000 initially in COVID public health specific grant funds. Some of that was already spent purchasing some furniture for this project in 2022. So we have remaining $601,000 to utilize for this project out of the COVID public health dollars. And then we also have child protection opioid funds, so not opioid settlement funds, a separate opioid child protection. Fund that we got approval for $20,000 to utilize for this family health expansion because of the multi-purpose room. Much of the work that we're going to be doing in the multi-purpose room is going to be helping to support families who may be. Having some substance use disorder issues and the children in those families. So DHS did approve that $20,000 for this project.
Okay, thank you. So this really wouldn't be much of a burden on the taxpayers, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess. This budget summary here, that that's the purple? Is that is that what we were talking about? Or is that the purple and the green?
The purple is the family health space that we're remodeling.
So the six, six twenty will.
Twenty one thousand is to remodel that space there.
And then.
The purple space.
Sometime in the future, we'll have a separate conversation about the green space, correct?
Right.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have a little bit more information outside of just the construction information that Steve shared. Some of you had the opportunity to do a walkthrough in late 2022 of the space. But just for some information for commissioners who may not have been sitting at the time, Becky Seacor, my predecessor, did a presentation on why we need to expand this space. And, you know, a few of you have already spoke to the fact that we haven't been able to expand it since the building was built. Ultimately, it was inadequate space for family health to be operating in initially. So this expansion is not necessarily to grow programs or staff. It is so that we can adequately have space for the programs and staff that we already have. And we're going to be able to add a multi-purpose room, which is something that we really need in the community service center. Due to the programming that we offer at Health and Human Services, we have the opportunity to use this multi-purpose room to provide training to the families that we work with. Skill building, we can utilize it. We've been very lucky that we haven't had to bring children back into our office space very often, but it does happen. And we really don't have a space for that right now. So if we can't find a placement immediately, we need to have a place to bring children back into. That's not an office setting. So that multi-purpose room is really going to be beneficial for our agency as a whole. So really, we're looking at increasing the space just for adequacy of of the program operation that we currently have. Improving workflow. So we're going to have a little bit separate space for our drug testing area as compared to our clinic area. We're going to be adding that multi-purpose space, which is going to allow us to do the skills training, supervised visits, emergency shelter for children. And then we're also going to have some improved screening space for our clinic. So there's many reasons that we want to take this opportunity to expand family health space. One, we have the opportunity to do it in that our we had a rental person leave, so we can, we can get the space at this point in time. But we also had a funding opportunity. So the stars kind of aligned to allow us to do this remodel at this time. There is going to be an ongoing increase to Health and Human Services rental costs in the building. And we are also able to find funding to be able to support that ongoing. And I'll actually let Amy talk a little bit about that. But do you have any questions about the uses of the expanded space?
No, I think I think it helped that we had a walkthrough before. Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to speak to you tonight about the sustaining the rent costs that we have. And so while that will be incurred over Health and Human Services as a as a whole. Public health will be able to sustain the additional rent costs through our WIC, HERSA, Strong Foundations, TANF and FET programs. Those are grants. With the exception of HERSA that are ongoing that we've had for several years, and we have no reason to believe that that funding wouldn't continue to exist. And then in addition, over the past year, Monica and her frontline staff, they get the credit for that. But they've actually been able to increase the revenue that we've been bringing in in just the last 12 months. And we anticipate using that revenue. So this would not impact our taxpayers.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me about sustaining the cost of the additional rental cost?
If if we're in line with this, could we put it on the other agenda?
Consent.
Consent agenda. That way we can move it through.
Yeah, that would be fine with that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seven M, yes. Okay, we are on with the Housing Trust Fund ordinance.
Good afternoon again.
Yes.
Anne Linsa, Director of Health and Human Services here with Jeff Lind, our Social Services Director. And we are here to talk with you about the establishment of a housing trust fund and releasing an RFP to secure an entity to manage the housing trust fund. The first step in establishing a housing trust fund is for you, the county board, to pass a housing trust fund ordinance. And in your packet, there is a draft housing trust fund ordinance that is based off statute 462C.16, which guideline, which outlines the guidelines that need to be in a housing trust fund ordinance. The document in front of you has three distinct sections outlining the sources of funding, the distribution of funding and the terms. The ordinance in front of you allows for the housing trust fund to be funded in a variety of ways. Now, Health and Human Services is suggesting that we utilize our local homeless prevention grant funds that we're going to be receiving. To be that initial seed money into a housing trust fund. But ultimately, what the ordinance allows us to do is to accept numerous varieties of funding into that housing trust fund. So private donors, any income that would come in from maybe a partner agency. City could contribute. So this is really something that is larger than just the local homeless prevention grant funds. The establishment of this would have that as its seed money, but we are hoping to have this fund ongoing in perpetuity. So that we can utilize it to to bolster the housing in our community. The second section, the distribution of funds section, talks about how distributions would be made. The holding entity, the person that would be managing the trust fund for the county. Would do the distributions through a board of trustees process. That board of trustees makeup is going to be outlined in the RFP that Jeff's going to talk about here in a minute. But it would include representation from our county board and our county Health and Human Services. Anything over $50,000 that would be approved by that board out of the housing trust fund would then have to come to the county board for final authorization. And then the holding entity would also provide a report at the end of each calendar year to the county board. to the county board outlining where the funds were distributed to, how many households were affected by the funds, et cetera. So the county board would be very involved through the requirements of this ordinance in where these funds are allocated to. We can use them for distribution for construction, rehab, rental assistance, and housing case management. But the ordinance also talks about a few other things such as soft costs for construction. So there's numerous ways that we can use the housing trust fund. And it is written like that for a reason. We want to have creative ideas coming to this board so that we can have entities who come forward and say, here's my idea to provide housing in our community. Maybe it's the, I think Commissioner Gould was talking about printing, printing homes, which I've never heard of before ever. But you know, we we have new things coming our way. So we don't want our ordinance to box us in and not, we wouldn't be able to do something creative because our ordinance doesn't allow it. So it does have some additional language in there around what we can do with the funds. And then the terms would be between the holding entity, so whoever is managing that trust. And each grantee, they would have an agreement that they would both sign. And if the grantee doesn't follow the terms, they would have to repay the funds. So an example of that would be perhaps we fund something out of the housing trust fund, a development, and we say this development needs to remain affordable housing for X number of years. If they did not follow through with that, then they would have to repay the funds to the housing trust fund. So I know that we were here, Health and Human Services was here earlier in June, and you guys had a presentation around our Hundred Cups Project. And you probably noticed in that presentation that one of the main, well, the number one thing identified through that process was the need for affordable housing in our community. And then Jeff was here and talked with the board in December of twenty two and then in May of just last month about this housing trust fund idea. And I think what this trust fund can do for the county is it can provide a platform to meet a community need, to collaborate with our partners, and to also have an ongoing voice in how this process rolls out. So I think the creation of the ordinance in and of itself will be an important first step in moving, hopefully moving some projects forward around housing. I did have a graphic, and Diane, do you want to pull that up? Can the commissioner see my graphic or is it only up here? Okay. So it's a little bit of a confusing idea. So I kind of wanted to put it on paper and explain if today the Beltrami County Board passes this housing trust fund ordinance, the next step would be that we would release an RFP to community agencies for an entity to hold that trust. The entity that then holds the trust will create a board of trustees. And that entity, along with the board of trustees, will then release RFPs for things like housing development, rental, housing security type things, or possibly housing case management. Once we receive responses on those RFPs, it would go back to the holder of the trust and the board of trustees. They would make some decisions around those responses that we get from the RFPs. And then if it's over a fifty thousand dollar cost, it comes back to the county board for final approval. So that's kind of the process. It goes back and forth. And so the county board will be very involved in how these funds are spent out of this housing trust fund. So the other thing I wanted to mention is that I heard, I heard the commissioners say, don't reinvent the wheel around housing the last few times that we came and talked. And so we did reach out to our partner entities who specialize in housing. And we talked to Northwest Minnesota Foundation, we talked to HRA, we talked to HRDC. And what we learned is that, one, the community is very accept, those community partners are very accepting of the idea of either managing or being part of this housing trust fund process. We also learned that there's already some projects that are in the works. There are long-term projects and there are ways that we can leverage the housing trust fund dollars to maybe create some big projects in the community. So that was encouraging. And then we also did receive confirmation that if we put the funds into the housing trust fund, they will be considered spent as far as the local homeless prevention grant goes. So I think that we're at a place now where we want to provide this information to the board. I'll let Jeff talk a little bit about the RFP, and then hopefully we can hang out and wait till the regular board session and maybe have a vote around this. So do you guys have any questions about the ordinance specifically?
Mr. Chair.
Jim.
So when it comes to the ordinance, do we need to have like a a public hearing or or three readings or something like that?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Sumner, it's always a good idea to have a public hearing when you're going to pass an ordinance, but I don't believe you're required to do it.
Okay. The, what's the typical cost for the trust, the in the agency trust holder?
Well, we're hoping through the RFP process that we would choose the one with the least administrative costs. But I mean, administrative costs typically are about ten percent.
Any other question? Jeff?
Jeff Lind, Beltrami County Health and Human Services. You guys have seen me many times. So the housing trust fund, I believe, you received in your packet, I think you received a copy of the of the RFP, the draft that we have. I just make note of a few things in that. On on page one, we have a pretty tight timeline that we're trying to work off of. Page one, we'd be sending it out to the bidders on the end of June. And then in mid-July, we we hope to have our, have it received and begin the process of of grading those and developing the, finding out who's to be the holder of the funds. On page two, Anne talked a little bit about the idea that we intentionally put this together in a way that other funds can be added to it. And yet we would still be able to meet the need, the statutory requirements of of individual dollars. Like, as we, as I talked about before, with the homeless prevention aid, there are certain things that have to be required in them. So we would want to build into the trust fund that those, those statutory requirements would be met. And then there may be other funds that come in that have different statutory requirements. We want to make sure that we're always going to be meeting the requirements of the dollars that come in. So that's kind of the way we developed this RFP and we brought it forward. Now, on on page three, we talked a little bit about the board of trustees that we'd be developing and depositing. Hopefully by October, we would hope that by December that the funds would be distributed to the entities. And then there would be an ongoing RFP like Anne talked about for the dollars to be actually spent on on projects. On page four, we talk, talks a little bit about the, the, what, the people that we would hope to have involved in the process. Of course, county board, Health and Human Services Director, someone from probably one of our cities in our, in our county, and then someone from one of our schools, school districts in the county. Wouldn't have to be Bemidji, it wouldn't have to be ISD thirty one. Because the reason we're including schools on this right now is a lot of the, the dollars for the homeless prevention aid came through counts that were done at the primarily counts that are done by the schools when it comes to homeless children. So that's where these dollars initially came from. That's why we wanted to include some school representation on this, whether, again, whether it is ISD thirty one or Black Duck, Kelly or wherever, it would be, that would be part of the, the, the entity that is holding the trust to help make those decisions as they bring them together. On the same thing, as far as city and we have more than Bemidji in this county. So there are other cities that may want to be a part of this as well. So we'd have to look at that. I think that's pretty much it. Like I say, you've got a copy of the RFP. We'd certainly like to be able to move it as soon as we can. These funds will arrive here at Beltrami County at the beginning of July. That's why we'd like to start moving on this as quick as possible. Any questions?
Yeah. Mr. Chair. Hey, Jeff, the, how much, approximately, how much is the homeless seed money that you would be putting into this trust fund to start to kick it off? And then obviously you said seven hundred and ten or whatever it was, money that would come in July to add to that.
Well, that is, that is, that seven hundred and ten is the homeless.
Oh, it is. Oh, okay.
Yes. And of course, that, as we've talked about before, that will be funding for five years. There'll be different amounts each year because they will recalculate after, after schools and counties put together their, their, their counts of homeless children.
So we'd be getting some decent sized amount of money each year that would go into the trust fund. And then it would just have to follow whatever guidelines that program had. If we get other monies in there, then the, the organization that is a successful bidder on the proposed RFP would end up taking and having to manage those different funds within the trust.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
God, thank you. So Jeff, if we decided that we had to have a public hearing, the earliest we could do that would be three weeks from now. Unless we had a special session.
Correct, July eleventh.
How, would that put, would that put you out of your timeline?
Well, I don't know that it would push us out of the timeline. We'd like to be able to move, move this as quick as possible so that we can count the money as spent and and get, get the dollars out there. I don't think it's a requirement that we have it done tonight. It would certainly be nice if that were to happen, but that's not.
Mr. Chair, I just, I think the requirement of having public hearings would be more for things that potentially could negatively affect the public. This would be a positive for the public. I don't know how anybody would be against us taking seven hundred and some thousand dollars and creating a way to be more assured of being able to use it. So I'd be fine with even putting it on the consent agenda personally.
Mr. Chair, you know, and a lot of folks in in my district, you know, are, you know, have a huge need for this. So I mean, I would hope that, you know, there's, there's really strong consideration to inquire for some input and involvement from, you know, Kelly or even Black Duck, you know, I mean, it's anytime I go out there in a community, you know, the, the thing that I often hear the most is Bemidji gets everything. So I want to make sure that, you know, that the voices that they're interested for are heard. You know, whether we have a, a public hearing or not, you know, I mean, I I can go either way, but you know, I just don't know if I'm ready to put it under consent just yet. I mean, I think, you know, a separate vote. I mean, especially when it comes to an ordinance, I think, you know, keeping it on the, on the regular agenda would, you know.
Okay.
My, my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Well, since it past practice is that we don't put it under consent unless everyone feels that way. So I think we'll leave it on the regular agenda. No, no, no. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have. P R L S.
Afternoon, Commissioners. They're passing around paper copies of the presentation that I brought. For just a moment while that makes its way around. All right. So I'm Melissa Watley. I am the Director of the Kichigami Regional Library System. And I'm here today to give you our very first sneak peek look at the twenty twenty four operations budget. So as a reminder, Kichigami is a five-county system. We operate two libraries in your county, including the Black Duck Library and the Bemidji Library. Quite a few physical branches, bookmobiles, headquarters. Your county is also served by our e-material of electronic materials and databases online. We serve a population of over a hundred and seventy eight thousand people and over forty one percent of them have library cards. So that's very nice. Here is our mission, vision, and values. I'm going to go ahead and rush through just a little bit so I could make sure that we stay within our allotted time. So at our libraries, we offer programs for the public's education, entertainment, and sense of community. We have resources to connect anyone in the community with the right information at the right time. We have facilities and staff that are great for your community. So this is some of the examples of the wonderful programs that we've had lately. One of the things that I really want to highlight is our Minnesota State Parks Library Pass. You can actually go into those libraries and get a State Parks Pass that you can take with you. Something pretty cool we have. And this is Anton Troyer speaking at the library last year. So our Bemidji Public Library in twenty twenty two had over a hundred and four thousand visits, over twenty one thousand registered users, more than ninety eight thousand circulated items. There's over twenty four thousand items in your physical collection. We have more than ten thousand people come to use the internet in our library as well as many wireless internet uses. We also had a ton of programs over a hundred and sixty with four hun, four thousand nine hundred and one attendees. Another really cool thing that we offer is meeting rooms that the public can use free of charge. So that was also available. And then our Black Duck Community Library in twenty twenty two, so over four thousand visits, over sixteen thirty registered users, tons of circulation, tons of items in the collection. This one, we only have so many public computers available. So people actually come to the Black Duck Library a ton for Wi-Fi use. So you can see that those Wi-Fi numbers are very, very high. Also lots of programs with lots of attendees. And we do also have a space available for members of our community at that library as well. We also have our e-library available where people can log on to view items in our databases. That includes not only entertainment items like audiobooks, ebooks, and videos, but also educational databases. There's a lot of really good consumer health databases. We're getting to get access to nursing databases through the state. So there's a lot of good information available on our website as well. So this is from our joint powers agreement. It talks about the way that we operate in our budgeting. So from the joint powers agreement, we adopt an annual operating budget. We get that out to our cities council and county boards so that they can establish the revenue that they will provide back to us. We get that feedback from you. And then if any jurisdiction provides less than requested, then we will adjust library services to reflect those reductions. We'll go on to the next one. So the total revenues from cities and counties need to equal all the expenditures in those local services. The city levies will be applied to the local city libraries. All additional costs then roll over to the county levy request. Cities and counties always have the opportunity to suggest changes. So if you get this budget and it is higher than Beltrami County is interested in funding this year, we can always talk about options. So, then you on down. So where we are in the timeline right now, we're honestly pretty early. Our board has looked at it in May. They have looked at it in June. We are still revising our drafts based on the feedback from our board members and from our communities to make sure that we're getting them where they need to be. At the end of the July, the board will approve those draft budgets to be officially distributed to cities and counties. So the draft you have before you today is a very early draft. We are continuing to revise it. In the September, the Carolus Board responds to budget suggestions. And then in October, we will confirm a letter back to you. November, the board reviews it, and then January of twenty four is the final approval of the Kichigami twenty twenty four operations budget. So looking into the twenty twenty four budget, our budget committee came together and they said we want to look at approximately a five percent increase in wages from twenty two to twenty three. Looking at the Bemidji Public Library, we're seeing about a seven percent increase in branch costs from twenty three. Black Duck Community Library is about an eighteen percent increase in branch costs. And then for Beltrami County, I also did want to point out that we are planning to continue the county levy buydown program where we reduce your county levy by a percentage. We are looking at about thirty thousand dollars that Kichigami is going to put in to buy down the Beltrami County levy for twenty four. So if you go down, you can get into the meat of it. These are the details of the Black Duck Community Library budget. So you can see what was approved for twenty three and then our initial adjustments for twenty twenty four. We are looking to add two service hours that would be available to the public for twenty twenty three. And then, excuse me, twenty four, and then also to make some adjustments to collections and add a little bit of staff hours in order to manage those two service hours. We've also increased the training budget to reflect actual costs. It was set pretty low. That wasn't even enough for our branch manager to be able to attend her professional library conference. So we were looking to increase that. The collections are largely staying the same. There's a little bit of changes. We are going to remove our audiobook rotating collection and put those funds into our hoopla digital collection instead. Branch managers are really wanting to get rid of that one. It doesn't see as much use and see a lot more in digital use instead. So overall, that's about an eighteen percent increase in branch costs from twenty three. Here's the Bemidji Public Library's initial draft budget. We are looking to add a ten-hour-a-week custodian position, total of point two seven five FTE added. We are looking to get additional insurance options for our staff. So this brings one additional person up into the part-time stipend range. Again, increasing training budget to reflect actual costs and showing some changes in shared collections. For the Bemidji Public Library, you're looking at a seven percent increase on this draft. So then going down into Beltrami County, this just brings all the information from the branch libraries and puts it on the county budget. You have the additional expense of the eight hundred and fifty dollar participation on the Kichigami Regional Library Board. You do not have any outreach services, so you're not paying for any bookmobiles or outreach services of that matter. So if you scroll down to the bottom of this one, you can. So if you scroll down to the bottom of this one, you can see if we kept Bemidji at a three percent levy increase, Black Duck at a three percent levy increase, the county would be looking at a twelve point nine percent increase. So one thing that I really want to highlight again is that this is just such an early draft. We are still talking with the cities about what appetite for an increase they may have. We are still talking with the branches about, is this really what you need? Where can we reduce? Are these all the best things you want? This is kind of all the branch managers' wishes fulfilled. If we had the money to do whatever they needed us to do, here's what we would do. We would offer some more staff hours. We'd give Black Duck a couple more hours of open service. And this is what the cost would look like. So we are continuing to work in our budget committee to try to find ways to reduce our costs, try to find ways to support the branch libraries from our general funding. But this is what it looks like as of now. And I am taking questions. I would love any information that the county wants to provide as far as suggestions for, we're looking at a five percent increase for our staff. What kind of percentages are you looking in your county? This is about the dollar amount that we're looking at. Does Beltrami County have an appetite for that? Are there revisions and suggestions that you would like me to take back to the Kichigami Budget Committee?
Okay. Joel, Joel, are you, are you representing us at?
Yes. Correct. I'm on the board. Budget Committee.
Okay.
Yep.
You see, you have any comments to make at all, or is it early, or?
I think Melissa did a fine job with her presentation. Again, this is the first initial draft of budgets. I would say that overall, generally speaking, the branches have put forward a very moderate requests as far as like expanding services or staff, programming, and that sort of thing. Yeah, I don't have too much to add other than what Melissa shared, so.
Okay.
At what point do we get a hard enough number so that we can complete our budget process?
I would say, I would say July. July is when the initial draft is approved by the Kichigami Board to be distributed to you. And then you can come back and say that does not work for our budgets. We need to talk about making reductions of X percentage or X dollar amount. And we can discuss how to make those reductions happen. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Alright.
Jim?
I'll call my comments.
Alright.
I would welcome anyone to pass those along through Representative Gold or then also to me. I'd be happy to take those by phone or by email. And we will get those to the Budget Committee for revision. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrators update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of updates for you today. I wanted to provide an update regarding the Human Resources Director recruitment process. And let you know that after three rounds, separate rounds of interviews and interviewing ten candidates, we have extended an offer to an individual from the cities. And that offer has been, excuse me, accepted. And the individual will be starting in early August. We're still working through some of the details associated with this start. One of the things that I wanted to pose to you in contemplating this transition, as you know, the current Human Resources Director has been with the county for over two decades. There's going to be a lot of institutional loss here associated with this retirement. What I'd like to recommend is to seek your approval to keep our current Human Resources Director on for about three or four weeks beyond the start date of the new Human Resources Director to get some of the transfer of institutional knowledge and bring that new person up to speed quicker. There's a lot of, a lot of details and history and all of that sort of thing that needs to be transferred. The salary savings for the remainder of the year, not having to pay the current Human Resources Director at her salary would essentially almost net zero this additional cost. So we could, we believe we can still stay within budget. We're very close to that with the salary savings I've just mentioned. While allowing for this opportunity, I just would seek your blessing to do that. And I can, I can talk with our, our director now about that. She's expressed an interest and a willingness to do this. But we wanted to run it by you first, if you're okay with that.
Okay.
No, just consensus.
Yeah, consensus.
I will haul that back.
Alright.
Well, I mean, that's separate. I mean, I just kind of think and feel that, you know, that's a separate position.
You know, that, that requires, you know, a different set of skill sets. And, you know, maybe, maybe this HR person, you know, doesn't need a job shadow. I, I don't know. I mean, it's, I mean, I mean, I get, you know, Linda you know, has all that knowledge, you know. But, and she writes, you know, notes down. I don't know, so. Just, I'm just trying to, yeah.
Okay.
There's no, nothing saying that if things are done within the first week or two that they wouldn't, she wouldn't have to stay on for a month or, correct?
Great. I think, I think we're having enough heads.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for that. Just to continue, just a quick update on the jail project. We have finished introducing the architects to all of the jail committees. We spent the better part of last week kind of doing that. So all committees are familiar with the architect and have done the meet and greet. We're going to integrate the cultural consultant earlier in the process than we initially contemplated. There's been some requests by the programming committee to make sure that that happens and that the information from the programming committee gets integrated into the Design and Operations Committee. So we'll be doing that. Also want to let you know that we're submitting for the state bonding bill, about fifty million dollar request. That's going to go in. That's going to be a general obligation bond. We'll be matching that with thirty million dollars in regards to the request and the application will be completed and sent off here actually momentarily. Next, wanted to update you on the Employee Health and Wellness Expo, kind of an exciting staff wellness program that has been culminating, gosh, for the better part of several years now, since we've had a wellness committee reboot. You might recall the pandemic kind of shut a lot of things down. We've rebooted the wellness committee. And this is their first large event. So really the first event probably in three or four years that the wellness committee's done of this size and caliber. The event will occur tomorrow in the courtyard and also in the boardroom between eleven and two o'clock. We'll have over thirty vendors that will represent a variety of different types of health aspects, whether it be, remember that our focus has been on total health. So that would be financial health, stress, physical, emotional, behavioral, monetary, like I think I just mentioned, just a variety of different areas. So we'll have vendors from a variety of different areas coming in to provide information to the staff about the total health approach. Commissioners are certainly welcome to attend. We'd love to see you there sometime between the eleven and two o'clock time period, if you're able to make that. We'll also have food and music available as well. Then want to let you know that we did officially kick off our fiscal year twenty twenty four budget last week with the management team. And the budget calendar I have for you here, we're just passing out right now. I just wanted to let you know that that kind of loosely describes the budget process by which we'll be following for this year. And if you have any requests, much like we are doing with the management team and directors, we'd like to get any specific budget requests in by June thirtieth. And then that way it allows myself and the finance team to prepare for the Budget Committee conversations. So June thirtieth is kind of the first big deadline in regards to getting all of that information in, particularly if you have any new requests or increases or adjustments to the budget that you'd like to see. And then lastly, just a reminder that the July fourth holiday this year falls on a Tuesday. So county offices will be closed. Additionally, that Tuesday happens to be our first Tuesday of the month. And so we will, we have already made the adjustment to move the commission meeting from Tuesday the fourth to Tuesday, the eleventh. And what that does is it puts us back to back on the eleventh and the eighteenth for back-to-back meetings of the commission. But it gives us a three-week period between now and that next meeting. So I just wanted to remind you that that's, that's occurring. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Questions? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're, we have a couple of minutes before we start the meeting.
All right, we have an opportunity at this point to have folks come come forth and share if they have some concern or question. It is because the topic on the jail is on the agenda. This is not the time to stand up and talk about that. It's if you if there's another person that wants to talk about some other issue. That's what this first session is about. And then there'll be plenty of opportunity for everyone to express themselves concerning the jail. So is there anyone that wishes to address the county board? On any topic other, yes. You may come forward, but just keep in mind the agenda that comments are limited to five minutes. And a personnel complaint against an individual county employee may not be heard initially at a board meeting. Madam.
Excuse me, I really want to talk to them. I've been coming to these meetings for over a year and I'm so happy to see so many people here today. I encourage you to come to North County Board, you know what's going on, you know, everything these five men have to decide about.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move forward. With the agenda and and we'll get to the discussion, yes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the agenda as as proposed, except for moving the item ten on regular agenda. Community service building, family health remodel to seven M on the consent agenda. That's the authorization to proceed with the community service center remodel. And I would like to propose moving. Item nine, the development of a housing fund trust. To the next item right after approval of the consent agenda. And then after that, we'll go to proceed with the public hearing.
So you make that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, so move. All right, how about the?
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the addition of seven M authorization to proceed with the community service center remodel.
Right? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to. So we're on to the regular agenda, correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the development of housing fund trust.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, I guess that we uh keep this on the regular agenda, just being that it's an ordinance, you know, and and involves an ordinance. I just want to make sure that um that it was just separate from the consent. So that's why I ask that um we keep it on the regular agenda.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, is there, was there, did you second that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Yes, I move that we authorize Health and Human Services to release an RFP to secure the an entity to manage the Beltrami County Housing Trust Fund dollars.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. All right, and that brings us to the public hearing. Right, right. Uh, as. I've been. Counsel here, uh, we do have another meeting, a public hearing at six o'clock. Uh, if we're not finished with our our public hearing that we're going to start now, at that time, we'll recess. Uh, briefly to cover that and then we will start back up again. So it's not like uh one is more important than the other, but one had been on the agenda for quite a few months. And all of you receive your tax statements, knowing that tonight at six o'clock, you would hear about the taxes. So uh that when we get to that stage, we'll recess. Uh, just long enough to cover those needs and then we will get back with the public hearing at hand. And I would like to uh to say that it's uh nice to see people involved. Myself, I had this vacation planned. I was not here at the last meeting. I've missed very few meetings in my tenure here at the county board, but that was a family scheduled event. Many months out, so uh I'm here tonight. Rest assured that I have not come into this cold turkey. Uh, I knew and I've been keeping pulse with it uh by being on the steering committee and getting involved with a number of different things with our jail project. So uh people have called and text and and whatever, and I just want people to know that. Uh, I've been in the know and I was supportive and uh tonight is the time, hopefully, that we can. Get answers to questions that you have. We've got a panel of folks that are work have worked on this from the beginning, asked questions. And then we'll have people that will answer. If we can't get an answer uh tonight, we'll continue this at another time because it's a it's a question and answer type. And comments uh from you folks. So with that stated, um, I think we have a just so we can all get started about the same at the same level. We're going to have a little uh program or Tom is get started with presenting and then uh we'll open it up to the folks to make their questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know we have this big of an audience that'd have put more effort into my hair. I apologize about that, but uh for those of you who don't know me, I'm the county administrator, my name's Tom Berry. And uh as the chair mentioned, uh, we thought we'd provide a small presentation really quick to bring everybody up to speed with kind of where we are in the process and how we got here. And hopefully maybe answer a few questions. And then after that, the time will be yours in regards to asking questions, getting information, any of that sort of stuff. So bear with us for just a few quick minutes here as we get through this process. All right. So um the first thing we want to start with is essentially uh the site selection timeline. You know, the county has been working on this project uh for, well, the better part of several several years. And in November fifteenth of last year, the board decided to build a new jail. Since November until January, the design and operations subcommittee was developing a rating and ranking criteria to identify properties as well. And that was to serve as a guide to help the board make decisions. The board in February of twenty twenty three uh did identify a preferred property and between March and April of twenty twenty three. We spent considerable time investigating and negotiating on that preferred property. In the end, that property did not work out for the county. So in April, between April and May, the county board pursued four other properties, um, all on the list as well. And on May thirty first, the board did approve a purchase agreement with what is now called the We Bolt Property. I won't go into the details regarding the site selection criteria because they've been published before, they're on the website, uh, kind of small to read here and take us a long time to get through. But this was developed, I'll just say, by the design and operations committee to provide a guide to the board. An objective way to try to look at various properties from all around the community and have some way to evaluate them against a certain set of criteria. That's all it was, was a guide, it's not a policy, just a guide. You can see there's quite a bit of information on this and a scoring criteria that came with each of the various categories. Properties were identified uh from a number of different sources, including geographical information system analysis. Community members that would come to the to the steering committee or to the board, excuse me, the board or the county administrator or anybody else. And um and give us an idea, hey, have you looked at this site? Have you looked at that site? Design and operations committee members did the same, the steering committee, city staff were even helpful in helping us to identify a number of different sites. Across the county as well. And finally commissioners and county staff as well. So a lot of different inputs in regards to properties. This was ultimately the first fifteen properties that were identified, scored, rated and ranked. And this is what uh what we began to pursue. This again has all been published, it's on the website, so I won't take really any time going through it. But what you'll notice is that this helped the board quickly realize which which properties couldn't work. And so they were DQ'd or disqualified and you'll see that on the rating and ranking screen. And then you'll also see which ones were kind of the preferred property and what order they were preferred based on a scoring. Uh, and again, this was all done just to create a guide for the board in the selection process. I want to talk a little bit about the purchasing process as well because a lot of folks have or a lot of folks from the community have been critical of the purchasing process. So I just, I want to, for folks who don't really understand, the process is set up in the statutes and also across the United States for public entities to negotiate in closed session. And the reason this is is because discussions concerning the acquisition of real property for a public permit purpose. Is typically closed when that open discussion would adversely in fact in fact, excuse me, affect or impact the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And there's good reason for this, there it is done to avoid undue influence. Pricing pressures, undermining, bullying, sabotaging or other adverse actions to either the buyer or the seller. Now, the statute's also clear that once a property is selected, um, it has to be publicly disclosed in an open meeting, which the county board did do. And that price has to also be disclosed as well, which the county board did do as well. So that's the reason why I think for some people it's like, well, where did this come from and how come we didn't know about the property purchases? It is protected negotiations under the closed session statutes of the Minnesota law. So hopefully that answers that question. Uh, I want to talk a little bit about the location details. I don't need to go, pretty much everybody in the room knows where we're talking about, so I won't go into any detail here on each of these pictures. But I did want to just talk about some of the highlights that were attractive for this property. It was the second ranked highest property. The first ranked property, according to the score sheet, was not for sale. It's almost seventeen acres, true, five of those acres are not usable because they have a seventy-five foot pipeline easement, which is an encumbrance along the west property line. Um, it's fairly level, upland, there's no structures, there's water and sewer utilities in street. And that's a pretty big consideration because when you have to drag water and sewer utilities, either increase them in depth, increase them in capacity, run them from another stuff. It can be pretty costly. In fact, the first property that we were negotiating on, as we looked into that property, it was approaching almost two million dollars to pull water and sewer infrastructure to that property. Which is also one of the reasons why uh we moved away from that in addition to environmental problems with the site, a low, a smaller footprint that we expected to find during the survey work. So we we moved away from that site. This site also has good access to the highway and to town. The county did offer five hundred thousand dollars on May twenty third, uh, that was countered on May twenty fifth with five hundred and forty thousand. This is the zoning for the area, it's own light density residential. There is commercial north of this property and immediately adjacent to the property as well. According to the city, B one is a commercial property, general commercial that is not serviced by the city. B two is commercial that is serviced by the city. This would be allowed with a conditional use permit or through a rezoning process and would would not require a subdivision plat. So here's the property again uh in blue here that's being identified. You'll notice the red arrow points to the immediately adjacent general commercial area. But in fact, the area that I've just highlighted with the blue dash around it is really, even though it's outside the city limits, it is operating as commercially developed property. So we do feel like there's a justification for bringing commercial continuing down the east side of the bypass. Um, and you know, it'll be up to another organization to to determine whether that's the case or not. For those who aren't familiar with the purchase agreement, this is also on the county's website, also been presented before, so I won't go through all the details. But the purchase and sale agreement is heavily conditioned on a number of different aspects, you know, from land use and zoning, property to archaeological concerns. Title review, water and sewer access and capacity, I mean, the list goes on and on. The county does have an eighty day due diligence period uh with a contemplated closing on August the eleventh of this year. Um, there has been some criticism criticism also in regards to the purchase price. Some people have said, wow, the purchase price is way higher than the assessed value, and that is true. Assessed value that the county has, um, I talked with the assessor, is a little bit low, um, but it's also low for. That's doing comedy shows today, yeah, right? Uh, there's good reason, right? In some cases, the the property is currently zoned and it's assessed as a residential property. The county is purchasing it as a commercial property. So it's not platted, it has no internal infrastructure at all, and it's also on the outskirts of town. So this is coming from our assessors who assesses these properties. But we also did a market analysis, so we felt that was really important. And so uh Century Twenty One conducted the market analysis for us. And uh they did identify that the county is purchasing the property as a commercial property. And that because of that, any seller will evaluate the market value based upon the proposed commercial use and will be setting the selling price accordingly. So I asked them to do a uh commercial sales listing and recent sales analysis. And here's the, it's pretty wide, and those of you who are in the business know it's pretty wide for commercial real estate. Essentially, real estate and commercial properties is valued on a per square foot basis. You can easily convert that to a per acre basis by multiplying by forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet in an acre. So you take all these numbers and multiply that number, you can get the acreage number. I just converted it here for you on the low and the high regarding the commercial sales and listings range. So anywhere between thirty-eight thousand to six hundred and ninety thousand, of course, as you might imagine, depending upon where you're located, if you're on shoreline, if you're in the city, if you're out of the city, if you're, I mean, there's so many different variabilities that you get a large range. The county purchased this property well below uh even the listing and or previous sales ranges. The county paid five hundred and forty thousand dollars for eighteen point six nine acres, which is sixty-six cents per square foot, far below the lowest of the actual listing range for the commercial property. So I just wanted to point that out. Some folks might still think it's too much, um, but the fact is that there's other value associated uh with this property as well. And that includes um infrastructure. So water and sewer infrastructure is right in street, so the adequate size and adequate depth where all we need to do is stub into it. Additionally, um, the property itself is flat and level like we just talked about, there's no structures to demolish, so no costs associated with demo. Site clearing and grading and those kinds of things are also low. So there are other um value add aspects to the property as well. So I just wanted to touch base really quickly, get everybody up to speed uh with where we're at with that. And then um at this point in time, essentially, I don't have anything further, but we'll stand for questions, but I'm sure the public has a lot to say, so I will step out of the way if it's okay with the board. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Now open the public hearing. Please state your name and address.
Misty Brave, five sixteen Beltrami Avenue Northwest. I have talked with Commissioner Sumner and Sheriff Riggs. Jails aren't a popular thing and they should not be a popular thing. Sadly, it's what brought this community together. I think that I can agree with people, I do pay attention to every meeting, I watch every meeting, I do my due diligence. I might not be here, but I do pay attention. I thank you for bringing me up to speed because that has not been on your website. I've been paying attention to this project and the information has not been there. This neighborhood is not an appropriate neighborhood for a jail. I don't live there and I can speak for those people. I wonder how much money are we going to lose if the city does not give the okay to build there? This is a. Conditional buy, correct? Okay. So that's my question to you is how much money is the county going to lose? If the city says, no, we're not going to give you the annexes.
That's a good question, thanks for asking that. Because it's a condition, because it's a one of the conditions of the purchase agreement that we that we would get either a rezone or a conditional use permit. If that's denied, then the ten thousand dollars that we that that the county put down as the earnest money in the contract, that would have to be returned. Thank you for the question.
Thank you for that, so there is potential that we will lose ten thousand dollars. Potentially, they will lose ten thousand dollars if the city does not.
No, no, that's not correct. The ten thousand dollar earnest money is.
You will get back.
That's correct.
Sorry, I misunderstood that. Now, I know what it's like to have a jail in my backyard. I, the jail has been there since nineteen eighty-nine. We have problems with it being in our backyard. I live very close to law enforcement and sometimes the response time is not very quick because they might be, sorry, news channel, on the other side of town. They might not be available a half a block. They might not be available a half a block. I also wonder what are we putting ourselves into as far as safety of people that are released in the middle of the night? Are we opening ourselves up to more lawsuits because people are harmed, hit by a car, anything in between? We shouldn't be going into this project as a way to bring in money to our county. Jails are not what bring money into counties and they shouldn't be. We should be looking at options to decrease our crime. And the state of Minnesota just did some of that. Whether you agree or don't agree about what laws they changed and didn't change, theoretically, our number should be down. I don't disagree that we need to change what we have because it is lacking what it needs to have. We have the building. You could build up. You chose not to. Don't fix what's already there. That doesn't make any sense. The neighborhood already knows it's there. We know, we deal with it every day, all day, every day.
Thank, thank, thank you for that. I do want to address a couple of those concerns that you had, if I could, if I might. Um, I would like to have the sheriff or, uh, Lieutenant Allen, who is our jail administrator, speak to that safety issue that you had a concern about with, please?
Thank you, everybody, for being here. So one of the concerns that you brought up was people being released from the jail. One of the things that we can do to mitigate some of those concerns is, it's my understanding from our jail administrator that we currently have about a ninety percentile of family or someone picking those inmates up as they're being released from custody. The other, the additional's could be put into policy where we have a release point here at the law enforcement center. So that would prohibit, or not prohibit, but that would inhibit people to walk in that neighborhood upon release.
But does that address the people that might be released for work conditions?
Calander, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Calander answer that question.
Work conditions have, sorry, Captain Calandra Allen, jail administrator. Work conditions, if they're released on huber of any sort, they must have their own source of transportation. And that's completely set up prior to them being even allowed release. So that's, uh, usually a moot point. They either have a ride and they are not allowed to walk out of the facility, not, not even now, so.
So currently they're not allowed to walk to a downtown location worksite?
If it is on foot and we know it's within, say, uh, I would say three blocks, that would be one thing. But we would have to make sure that it's a fifteen-minute, uh, timeframe from them to get to their job and back. That's usually the timeframe, but I have not actually heard of somebody recently being released and walked out. If they are, that's something that we would have to check into.
So Captain Allen, could you also address the issue of building out versus building up? Because I think that was an important question that she asked.
Yes, that's a very good question as well. So building up is a challenge because it's multiple levels. Multiple levels bring multiple sightlines. And currently, uh, the older, or the, um, the older security system, we only had thirty-two cameras. Currently, now we have a hundred and thirty-six cameras. And with multiple levels, there's sightlines that you cannot see. Even currently, we have a ton of blind sites. And it's a challenge, uh, with having the capacity. You have to add more staffing because there's more posts that have to be covered and it's constant. And the post orders come from DOC. DOC regulates a certain amount of areas that we need to have. So if there's an additional unit, we have to have another body. And each unit has to have at least one body. Therefore, we also have to, each post has to have four individuals to cover it twenty-four seven. Then you have to add a fifth because you have to cover PTO, sick, vacation. So DOC is Department of Corrections. They are the legally, uh, the licensed authority over all county jails.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Alyssa Carlson. I live at one six four eight fifteenth Street Southwest. If I might, I have a few copies. Oh, excuse me, Alyssa Carlson. I live at one six four eight fifteenth Street Southwest. And if it's okay, I have some, um, copies I'd like to share with the commissioners. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for having us here this evening. Commissioners, we are asking you to reconsider this purchase agreement and forge a citizen partnership in the site selection process. We are advocating for a future site with the least amount of impact to families and residents. You can see by the number of people standing with, here with me this evening, that we deeply care about our community and our neighborhood. We have many concerns with the proposed location, including no formal site selection committee, the criterion used for the scoring, the lack of weight of neighborhood impacts in the scoring, traffic changes, contradiction with the comprehensive plan, which is a citizen vetted document, loss of a parcel that could provide upwards of forty-size city lots, um, which Bemidji suffers from single-family home, uh, lack, a lack thereof, a lack of infrastructure in this area to support a large facility. I would argue that I've talked to the public works, uh, individuals and it appeared to me that no one had been contacted prior to that May thirty-first about the size of pipes that would be needed to vet the water and sewer. Page four of the jail site selection guide published by the DOJ states this. Because site selection is so sensitive, it is important to allow time for public input and review in addition to the political decision-making process. Even if the site selection committee members feel sure that they know where the new jail should be located, they should take the precaution of going through a public process of the site selection. The site selection committee should issue a public call for all interested parties to come forward with their proposed sites. Because this is my first opportunity to provide input on the selection process, I've brought a map with me and I know it's facing, uh, the audience here. Um, I provided some copies to you, but I want to draw your attention to the yellow flags or the orange dots, which, um, per my research, meets the majority of the criteria and has the least amount of residential impact. They are all zoned correctly in current state and so would not require any zoning or land permit uses. We, your citizens, want an opportunity to participate in this process. We respectfully request revisitation of the site criterion as well as the site selection process. I know together as partners, we can find a better location for this jail that meets the needs of not only this community, but it would have minimal impact to residents and set us on the path for fiscal success. Thank you for considering this request.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Johnson and I am a resident of the neighborhood in which you are proposing to build this jail. So I know that, uh, the commissioners have done a lot of work. I know you've done as much due diligence as you think, you know, has been needed. But you know, when we talk about stakeholders, I think there are a couple stakeholders who take priority, not, um, water lines or electrical or sale prices. Those are not the priorities. The priorities and the stakeholders are the residents and the inmates. So I don't know how familiar you are, all of you, with the process that inmates go through. And you might be, say, well, we're going to get them transported when they're released. We're going to come up with the plan. We're going to do this, but you know what? I don't think that that plan is there yet. So I want to tell you a little bit about, if you have not been through the process of somebody, an inmate who has been arrested, who has been booked and put into jail, who has sat there through the weekend and does arraignment on Monday. If you have not sat in the courthouse and watched what that arraignment looks like, then you're not familiar with what you're causing these inmates to go through and their families and their supporters to go through. So I want to tell you a quick story. I happened to be in the arraignment on Monday a couple of different times for a couple of different reasons. And here's the story of a gentleman who, uh, was considered an inebriate, a homeless, was put into jail on a Friday, sat there through the weekend, was very happy to be there because it was ten below, fifteen below zero. Spent his time in the jail and he, and I watched him at the arraignment Monday morning. If you haven't sat there, you ought to take the opportu- opportunity to go and see what inmates go through. So this gentleman is an older gentleman and he's homeless and he goes up, it's his time for arraignment. And the judge says to him, well, I will release you on your own recognizance if you waive your right to an attorney. And he said, no, I would like an attorney. And the judge says, I'm telling you, I will release you if you waive your right to an attorney. And the gentleman said, no, I would like a public defender. I would like a public defender. It's not really that he wanted a public defender. He wanted to stay in jail because he had no place to go and it was fifteen below zero. Well, after the fourth time, the inmate finally gave in and he said, okay, then I waive my right. And the judge says, you are released. They took him back to the jail and he was released on his own recognizance. When I left the building, he was walking in a light, thin jacket in fifteen below weather with no place to go. He wanted to stay in jail because that was a resource for him. When you take this facility and you put it out in that community, in my community, you are removing resources from the inmates. And you are putting undue responsibility on the community in which you are putting this jail. When you move and you put this jail and you move it away from the hub of law enforcement and judicial services and you're removing it, you are now creating situations which we don't have the answer for yet. How many staff is it going to take to start transporting people back and forth? What are the other resources it's going to take to support those inmates? When we say that they're going to be released on their own recognizance, all of a sudden we have inmates who don't have transportation, families who don't. We'll say, well, we're going to give them a ride into town. Are you going to give them a ride home? What are you going to do? We're going to, where are you going to take those inmates who are released and they have no place to go? You are creating a thoroughfare in our community for inmates to try to find their way back into town, which is the hub of their resources and their support. Their resources and support is not in our community. That's not where it is. And you are removing that from the inmates. Now then, let's take a look at who our inmates are. We know who our inmates are. They're the poor, they're the natives, you know? We know that they are the disadvantaged. And yet we're going to put them out there and we are going to expect them to have the resources they needed to be successful. How many times are we going to be driving them back and forth from our community into town, into the court system? How many staff is that going to take? We're already saying that we have to build a new jail because we're short on staff, overcrowded. We don't have enough staff and all of a sudden we're going to need more. So I'm going to wrap this up, Dick. I'm going to wrap this up. So here's what I'm saying to you. You are expecting us in our community to give you justifications of why we don't want this jail in our community. I am saying to you, we don't need to provide that justification. We just need to tell you that it doesn't belong there. These are our homes. This is our property that we purchased. And we do not have to give justification of why this jail should not be there. So the other thing I want to say, when you are creating a thoroughfare, you are creating a thoroughfare of, for those inmates, for the people who are like-minded, who have a like social life, that'll be going through our community where our kids are, where our high school is and all that. So our, our bus transportation, you have now created a thoroughfare for like-minded, possibly criminal activity or people who are associated with that kind of lifestyle. I would say to you that I know, everybody knows that a new jail is necessary. There's no disputing that. What we're talking about is the location and the lack of support that we're giving those people who need it the most. The other thing I would say is that mistakes have been made. The beauty of life is that we get to get up every day and fix those mistakes. There's no shame in changing our minds. Okay? The other thing I would say is, you know, possibly you could force this on our community because possibly you have the right and you have the authority and you have the power. But I'm saying to you that because you can, doesn't mean you should.
Tough act to follow, but
You know, and one of the things that I failed to mention is if we can keep it five minutes or under, uh, there's a lot of people to share. Okay, Dick?
Chairman Anderson, members of this county commission, thank you for the opportunity to address you on this issue. I'm Richard Lehman. I reside at fourteen twenty-six Irving Side Lane Southwest, which is a residence in the neighborhood that you are seeking to change with a, a facility. I'm currently the president of the South Lake Irving Association, which was established in nineteen seventy-two. Uh, we celebrated our fiftieth anniversary last year. Things that happen, you know, that associations arise from is, is because communities have something in common and our neighborhood has something in common. We're quiet for the most part. We're, you know, we have a very tight-knit neighborhood out there. As many, many of you are probably very much aware of, on an annual basis, we have our national night out at the Roger Lehman Park, uh, a park that our neighborhood has embraced and, um, added to the amenities at that park, uh, by building a pavilion. And the city has, in light ways, has also added some amenities to it. So we have a very nice park in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has also expanded over the last twenty-five years with new developments that have occurred. The Irving Oaks neighborhood, the Harrison Court, Hoover Harding Court areas, uh, have added some residents to our neighborhood. And all of these people moved out there because the environment of our neighborhood, it's a very attractive, very desirable neighborhood to live in. And as a result of that, it's not uncommon, when I'm out and about in public, that, uh, people ask me, there any houses for sale out in your neighborhood? We love your neighborhood. We want to move to your neighborhood. We'd like to be in your neighborhood. We like to hold ourselves up and as an example of what other neighborhoods can be like. The other thing is our houses are all well-kept out there. And so when they are up for sale, they don't last very long on the market and they're sold. And because their people landscape their yards, they take care of their yards, the yards are attractive. The curb appeal, as they like to say nowadays, is there. Our neighborhood has just been a, a very good neighborhood. I've been there since, uh, nineteen eighty-nine. My kids grew up in that neighborhood and as neighborhoods will do, they transition over time. We, you know, I was the young one when I moved in, me and my family. Now I'm the gray hair in my neighborhood and young families are moving in and there's a lot of kids. Go to the Fish Fry on August first with us and you'll see perhaps forty or more kids there playing in the, in the facilities that are there. Because that's what our neighborhood has become all about again. It's, uh, we're on a cycle, um, that has brought that young group back into our neighborhood. So putting this facility in there, as was, has been pointed out already, um, could impact the neighborhood. While I was writing my comments that, to make tonight, a, a neighbor that has their house, had their house up for sale, it has, uh, an offer pending, or the paperwork is in the process, sent me a text that said, if you don't think that the jail is going to impact you, I had to divulge the fact that the potential for the jail being there was, you know, a potential. And therefore, they didn't have any families tender an offer for the home. They had, so it sold to an assisted living facility will be going into that, to that home. That's coming into my neighborhood and stuff. But it's kind of sad commentary that perhaps that had, was a deterrent to a family moving into our neighborhood because of the jail. So I want you to take that into consideration as you listen to the comments that are being made. When you have your discussion about where to move this facility, um, where to locate it, um, I'm hoping that you will use these comments that are being made to understand the community that you're looking at impacting with this type of a facility. So I respectfully request that you reconsider this and, uh, relook at some of the alternatives that you have in your, at your, or perhaps even some others that have yet to be come forward. So thank you for your time. I appreciate that. That's, that's your time.
Alyssa, I can, I can
Melissa, I can, I can use that too, if you don't mind. Hi, Scott Williams. I've had a microphone or a camera in my face for the better part of my professional career and I don't know if I've, my hands have ever sweat as much as right now. I live at fifteen oh three Jefferson Avenue Southwest. That's the first house on the other side of the bridge from where this proposed site is. Yeah, I'm sorry, guys. You guys still got your maps?
Yep.
Yeah. Right. So here's the location. I'm right there. That's the first house. If you go across the bridge on the right hand side. And I talked to my, uh, my realtor in two thousand and six, when my wife and I were looking at this property. And I, my question, I looked at everything. I thought I looked at everything. Yeah, I did. I absolutely did. Came down here, actually, pulled out the map to see, okay, is that land, what is that land zone for? Is that residential? They said yes. That was like the last thing that I did before then I went to say the title, signed away. Good to go. And all due respect, Tom, it's not on the outskirts of town. It's on the outskirts of, yes, the official city. I'm not in the city limits. But there's a residential neighborhood there. That small portion of the property up in the northwestern corner that you described is completely surrounded. Other than that small, what portion to the north, all of those commercial entities are on highway two. Back behind trees, property out of sight of this residential neighborhood. This proposed jail would not be. It's completely surrounded. Look at the neighborhood. Richard just talked about South Lake Irving. Cross the road all the way down fifteenth, sixteenth, all the way down to Marquette. That's going to affect a large amount of people. It is. And I, I'm not, I'm not sure if maybe you guys were guessing this would be an issue, that this many people would show up. I don't know. The Holmes property that you described. I'm not sure what the, what the footage is surrounding that or the, or the issue with purchasing that land was. But there's nowhere near this many residents that we've affected by it. Correct? Correct, gentlemen? Yeah?
Scott, you're correct. I think Commissioner or Administrator Barry addressed that issue and I don't know if you wanted to readdress that again?
I'm happy to do that, Commissioner Carlson. There were several reasons the Holmes property, which wasn't the highest rated property according to the ranking and rating, rating and ranking criteria. But it was the one that I think for the reasons that you are bringing up with the county board also, um, liked. And as we began negotiating on that property and looking at the due diligence of that property, it became quite clear that the footprint that we would need for the jail was shrinking as we were looking at survey maps, particularly because of the wetlands impacts associated with that particular property. Also usable area versus, versus a per square footage standpoint was also extraordinarily high. I think you, I think they're trying to sell that property now for six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, and they want to sell a hundred and, almost a hundred and forty acres. And only about four or five of it, uh, six of it maybe is usable. We don't know what the fill, if that's fill or native material. And the other thing was utility infrastructure costs were pushing two million dollars just to try to get utilities there. So there were a lot of unknowns and a great deal of expense. Obviously, certain, certainly several million dollars more than the current property that's being discussed tonight. In total.
How about the impact on the residents and their properties surrounding this? Have we looked at that impact at all? How about the cost of that being a residential neighborhood and the potential taxes down the line? Compared to what's there now or what a jail would have, correct? I mean, we're, we're talking a lot of money, guys, right? And it, it seems to me that the correct term I'm looking for, um, it, it, it feels insensitive to the residents of, of the neighborhood. We're all, I, I haven't slept. I wake up three o'clock in the morning. I coach baseball at night, up early in the morning by five to go to work. And this has just been unbelievable stress on, on my life, my wife, my, my family. Negatively impacting property owners is, is really something I urge you to, to consider here. And, and look, and I trust that the sheriff's office is going to do everything in their power with people to, to, if they move inmates. And release people. Uh, I get that, but was it Michelle? What's that?
Michelle.
Michelle, my apologies, Michelle. I didn't hear any answers to her questions about the number of people and the cost and so forth that she addressed.
Would you restate the question, please, Scott?
Well, I, so I didn't hear any answering of the questions that she, she addressed.
Well, I, I believe that she was talking about transportation of, of inmates either to and from. And I think, um, Kalander, could you speak to, uh, with, with the new, uh, the information that you brought forth to the design committee with regard to transporting inmates to and from hearings, uh, uh, and, and now how they're handled? Could you address that for?
So currently we have in-person, is that what you're talking about for court? So in-person court, we have approximately five to ten a week. Zoom hearings obviously are a lot more, uh, um, popular because it does help the inmates stay a lot, um, a lot more, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Comfortable, I would say. I started working in the jail in two thousand and eleven and we used to bring, I would say in upwards of twenty to thirty inmates over on a Monday or a Tuesday after a holiday Monday, through our tunnel underneath the jail and it was such an agitation for them because they were out of their cells, out of their housing units. They didn't get lunch right at the same, right time and they were having issues multiple times. So the one thing we found out with the Zoom hearings has been really, really beneficial is we can call them twenty to thirty minutes prior to court. They get to hear their rights, uh, and review them and then they go to court. They see their judge. It's either, uh, you know, a continuance or a lease and they can go right back to their housing unit. So it's been a lot more comfortable. Is that the question that you're asking?
No, the question, I think ultimately is the, the amount of people that if you're going to increase the, the size of this jail, that's a lot more people too.
Sure.
That's a lot more impact. Um, let me, can I just leave you this? To me, it just seems like a zoning issue for me. I mean, I, I bought that property. Thinking it was residential and it would stay residential because former joint planning boards and city council had that in store for that property. And you guys are going in a different direction than that. And I would urge you to really listen to these people that continue here tonight. It's, it's okay to change your mind. It's okay. I mean, I, I think about, I'm doing Beaver hockey games, uh, in the early two thousands. Doug Fuller comes over, he has, I got a great idea. Let's, let's, let's try to rebuild the John Glass Field House. And, and remodel it. And then that kind of fizzled out and then there's more design plans where the old high school was going to be. And that's was the next intent to where that building was going to be built. And then it was downtown and they called it the Vinci Regional Events Center at the time, the BRAC. And so then they, they, they went through that whole, this is a very different project, I understand, but eventually it goes down to South Shore, four buildings, four different properties later. I urge you, it, it's okay to listen to these residents. Find a better solution. This is too important to not just the community out there, but the city and the county as well. Thank you.
No, I don't know that we have time to talk.
You know what, folks? Can we start with you, uh, as soon as we get this other meeting out of the way because it, uh, it's about two minutes before the other meeting and I don't want to cut you off. Okay? Thank you so much. So we'll recess this meeting, uh, and hopefully we can move through the other meeting quickly.
Business at hand dealing with the location of the jail. We have the same folks that were up before, come on up and identify yourself, we can continue.
Thank you. James Ravnikar, I live at 616 Robin Lane Southwest. And I'm here tonight to ask you to reconsider the proposed jail site on Jefferson Avenue that lies within a residential neighborhood. The proposed site within this residential neighborhood contains approximately 176 homes that lie within the notification zone. Now, I can't speak for the 175 other homeowners, but I can tell you why I moved to that neighborhood. And it's because it has such a quiet country feel so close to the city. Has that characteristic to it? We don't have the noise and light pollution that you get when you live downtown or somewhere more populated density. We don't have traffic at all hours, the day and night. We just have a quiet residential neighborhood. So I think that, you know, adding this facility to that residential neighborhood would forever change and destroy that quiet character, that country living that so close to the city that we all enjoy. Now, I understand that there is no perfect place to put a jail. And that no matter what site is chosen, somebody's probably going to be upset. But while there's no perfect place, some places are definitely better than others. And I think there are definitely better places than within this quiet residential neighborhood of 176 homes. So I would like to respectfully request that the board reconsiders this decision. Go back to the drawing board. Come up with a process that places a greater weight on the impact of neighborhoods. I guess I'll just finish by saying that I think it's okay, and I think it's even admirable for a public body to say, you know what? We didn't consider some or all of these things. We're going to go back to the drawing board. We're going to cast a wider net. And we're going to do our best to come up with a solution that does the least harm. Thank you.
Hello, I am Noemi Ellsworth with Better Homes and Gardens Real Estate, and I'm a Realtor. I wasn't really aware that this was going to be the location that they ended up with. But I want to come here and speak on behalf of one of my clients that's in the middle of purchasing a home in that near that jail location. When they call me up and say, is this going to impact the value of my home? I say, I am sorry, I am not psychic. So after talking with them, they're still going to move forward because they like the house. But they have concerns like all the other neighbor people in the neighborhood. Now, I emailed every one of you as a county board commissioner. Two of you responded. Thank you for the two that responded. Still wasn't happy with some of the things you had to say. But being a Realtor, over the last 10 years, everything is negotiable and people can walk away from a purchase agreement. I hope that you listen to your community and reconsider and end that contract and find a better location. I believe the better location is the, what's it called in Fifth Street? El Rancho location. I know that you've looked on your maps. My question is, have any of you walked the property? Like physically walked and tested all the land there?
Yeah, I've been to the site.
And did you do any land testing of the soils?
I'm not qualified to do that, but we did talk with surveyors, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation.
Okay, well, someone, another person that I know that's connected to the family said that people have not been on the land. I don't know if that's true or not. There's plenty of acreage there, and I think if the Northwest Juvenile Training Center could build in that location, I think it's still another better location than out on Jefferson. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If any of you tire of your flowers, just let me know, I'll take them off your hands. They're beautiful. My name is Becky Livermore. Brian and I live at 1519 Lincoln Log Lane Southwest. A third of a mile from the Weebolt property. I am a supporter of and a believer in land use ordinances, planning and zoning. Because these regulations give homeowners some predictability, some security, and some protection from land uses that just don't fit in with our family way of life. Now, when we're looking for that perfect place to live and we find a home that for most of us is the largest financial investment we will make in our lives. We look for an area that is safe, a place where we can call our neighbors by their names, we can ride our bikes, we can go for walks. We look for areas that are zoned residential. Residentially zoned neighborhoods are protected from undesirable businesses and services such as adult entertainment, liquor sales, gas stations, jails. These are not allowed in residentially zoned areas. Now, the site you've chosen is zoned residential. And it's zoned that way because it's in a residential area. So we don't think that this new jail will fit in our neighborhood. We want to be DQ'd. That was a new one for me. I always think of Dairy Queen when I think about myself. So we respectfully ask you to please rescind the vote of two and a half weeks ago. You only have to, of course, look out here and listen to the neighborhood and you can tell how upset we have been. We have felt forgotten. We haven't been included. We're very angry. We can't sleep. I'm crabbeard and a wet hand. We we are your constituents. We voted for you. We want you to remember us. So please, we ask you to rescind that vote that you took and reconsider and search for a better, more appropriate place for the jail that won't negatively impact so many people. Remember, DQ. Okay? Thank you.
Hello, my name
Hello, my name is Jim Ritchie. I live in 1424 Otter Point. I'm going to have Missy Dodge read my comments.
I have lived in this community all my life and own property on Weegas Drive Southwest, directly across the road from the proposed jail site. Recently, I asked City Hall if I could build a garage on my property. And the staff said I could not because a garage would change the character of the neighborhood. I asked about, I asked about the jail being built. And she said she would not give them a permit either because the property is zoned residential. The zoning and planning board have given their word that this area would remain residential. Do you five men feel it is ethical to go against all the homeowners that have built and purchased homes in this residential neighborhood? And go against the zoning and planning board too? We'll let you answer that question. If the zoning and planning board says no, what's the next step?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Ritchie.
Yeah.
I think, thank you for that question, Mr. Ritchie, and I think that, Tom, would you like to address that?
Thank you for the question. I'm Tom Berry, the county administrator. Thank you. And I've been asked to address the question. I'll do that. And if the board wants to amend their argument or throw my answer out, that's fine. They can do that as well. So we don't know what the joint planning board is going to do. There's no guarantees in this. Like, we don't know if it's going to be conditionally permitted. It is allowed under the land use laws of the planning board, under the policies. It's clear that it is a possible use. What we don't know is what the conditions may or may not be. What we don't know is whether the county can live with those conditions. If they get placed on there, we don't even know if we can get something that's satisfactory. There's there's really no way to know that, which is why we've conditioned this purchase and sale agreement so that we would have an out to be able to, to take the time that it takes to kind of go through that process. So that's, I guess, a good answer I can give you. We don't really know. But if it doesn't work out, that's why we have earnest money on the table that's refundable if the property doesn't perform the way we expect it to.
One thing that really doesn't bother me, a man's word. You know, a man has to be better than his word. Okay? So these people give these homeowners their word it was going to be residential. So they bought homes, and if they knew there was going to be jail there, they wouldn't have bought their homes or spent their money. And in the county commissioners, I hope you guys' word is good also. So there's no way, if your word is good, and you give these people their word, you can't back out of your word and what you say. I mean, that is, so how about all these other properties that are zoned? If these guys want to just walk, they want to change it, we can just go ahead and do that. And that's, again, it's an integrity issue on good brief. As our country built on a man's word. So it really, really disturbing to me. And we voted for these five people, and we didn't think to say, okay, a man's word is good. I was in business all my life. And my people that worked with, they shake their hand, we give us their word, and that was it. We didn't change a word. So that means an awful lot. And right now, we're teaching our young kids and they're teaching adults. Doesn't that mean anything to you guys? You can say, okay, kids, if somebody tells you you're going to do something, well, wait a minute, maybe they're to live and might change their word and do something different. You know, that's what's happening. That really, really upsets me. And the people that bought these houses, knowing that it's a residential area, you're going to step on them and take their language away, the charming away. I just don't understand how people can do that and sleep at night. I mean, I just, very disturbing.
My name is James Parrish, 2515 South Lake Irving Drive, Bemidji. And I pretty much got to reiterate what every speaker had said tonight. Becky said she's madder than a wet hand. I'm madder than a wet rooster. Richard Lehman talked about his neighbor's house there, 1428 Weegas. I toured that house with the real estate agent. Days later, I heard about the jail, so I called her back. And I said, what's that going to have for property due to property values? I called about a half a dozen real estate agents. And I wanted to get a feel for this. And they pretty much all said, well, there's a few that it won't make any difference. There's a few that it will make a difference. So if you have a property for sale, you've lost that potential to sell your property. So exactly what everybody else is saying here, it's got to have an effect on our values. We talked about the DOJ and the guide about building jails. They want a large, flat, spread out area, but it sounds like it's only a guide. We can build two or three stories. I don't know that unless we're in the airport fly zone. But I don't know why we can't build up. The other thing, in 89, when they built the jail, they farmed everybody out. They built the jail, year or two later, brought everybody back. We had a state of the art jail. Our brand new jail now is suddenly an old jail. Do the same thing. Vacate the street. Go ahead. I mean, I think Jason had said, a city block is 92,000 square feet or whatever. They needed 97,000 square feet. Well, my gosh. Do eminent domain like they did before on the properties right here. Do that. Oh, we don't like to use eminent domain. Why? I mean, can somebody give me a good answer why we don't look at Minneapolis when they put 94 through there? They vacated hundreds of homes. It can be done. It really can. I think we're talking about, what, three businesses and nine homes in there? Yeah, okay, it might cost us a little more. We're going to lose some tax base. The other thing is, the city, I think, has a number of properties. The railroad corridor, where we already have no tax base from a lot of these properties. And I don't know about the property. I think across from you, John, isn't there a vacant property there too? That, that.
What property are you talking about?
Pardon me?
What property are you talking about?
You know, I didn't bring that information. I was looking at a map and I should have gotten a copy of it to the, what, west across the street? I thought there was a property that I could be speaking out of turn, so I shouldn't have said what I did.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. There's a little tiny red dot on this map. And I'm, and I'm not sure, I don't have the history on this, you know, what it all entails. So, okay, again, nobody wants a jail in their backyard. And I'm sure that nobody else here would want to be next to the site that you proposed if you were in our neighborhood. And I can't imagine anybody here that's agreeing to that, that would say, oh, yeah, that's okay. Yeah, we talk about Zoom, we talk about, oh, they can call for a ride when we release them. I don't know, there's a lot of whitewash to me that's going on. You're trying to sell it, and it's just, for me, it's not working. Again, I think you also can close Eighth Street and use Central School, to my knowledge, which is limited. I don't know what the plans are for that building. Why can't we use that building? You've got a lot of room there. But again, couple stories tall. And we have technology. We talked about cameras. Gosh, there's cameras, you can put cameras so many different places that you, I mean, there's nothing that you should be, not be able to see, you know.
Jim, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify something. Did you, would you like to have Calander speak to that, the DOC requirements again, to just reiterate that? Because it sounded like you brought that up again, but maybe it wasn't clear?
Please do.
Can we clarify that or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the reason why we're requesting to try to have a lower level jail or one level jail is because there's multiple angles and you have to have people to look at those angles and cameras. So if you have less sightlines, you can have less individuals be able to staff that jail appropriately per DOC measures. And it is a constant battle when you have one or two individuals watching 132 angles or 136, excuse me, then versus, let's say, 20, and you have two people watching those angles. So those are, that's really what we're dealing with.
Well, there again, I'm thinking that, you know, we have the room. It just has to be, use your powers to be the eminent domain. Do that block, vacate those streets. It's, I would think, the other thing is, I worked for Robert Carr when they built the wastewater treatment plant back in 84. Well, I don't know how many times people commented, what a travesty, this beautiful lakeshore, and we got a sewer plant there. Let's not duplicate this.
Jim, you want to? Thank you.
I'm Tim Marazik. I live at 2512 South Lake Irving Drive. Been in that neighborhood off and on since 1968, so to see. I've been in that neighborhood off and on since 1968, so to see a jail go in there kind of gets the hair on my neck to stand up a little bit. I got a few questions. One is, why is the Lincoln School disqualified? What disqualified that? Or Central School, excuse me.
The Lincoln, I'm sorry. The Central, the Central School site, that block alone by itself is just not big enough.
How about if you connect it with the next block?
So if you connected it with the block to the south of that or to the block north of the two together would require a vacation of Eighth Street between them. So that would be a process that would have to go through the city and the zoning on that area would have to also be changed because the block north of the jail, I believe, is residential with some mixed use business in there. I'm not sure. And so, you know, so you could apply to the joint planning board to get a conditional use permit or a rezone. But yet, the footprint, as we go through the Department of Correction requirements, as we've been out and visited other new jail sites that are being done and talk with the architects that that do nothing but build jails. An elongated rectangle like that just doesn't work for citing a jail. It just doesn't work because of the way the pods are set up, the way that Calander was talking about setting up so that you have less, you know, the sightlines are better, so you have less staff. It's, I think it's, I ought to speak for myself, but I believe it's the intention of the county board to minimize operational costs ongoing. That's going to be a jail that's going to be there for a long time. And if we double the operational costs, that's a lot of tax dollars that we would be responsible for by not making a decision about how we make this, how do we footprint the facility?
Have you guys considered the cost of what it's going to cost to get people back and forth to the new jail where you want to put it?
So, Tim, that's a great question, and Calandra, I think, did touch on that before with how the significantly reduced amount of transportations back and forth to the courthouse. The one added cost will be the fact that when they're released, if they don't have a ride, the release point will be the law enforcement center. No one will be released there without a ride. If there's no ride, and they'll be walked out to their ride, if that's not the case. And Sheriff, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, well, like I said before, we can mitigate those things and nothing is set in stone just yet because we haven't gotten to that point as far as what we can do with our policy to make these changes. But I think that you, with regards to the transport, what are we, releasing maybe two or three a day? We're releasing like two or three a day from custody. We're taking in a lot more than that. We're currently housing 70, 70-ish inmates out of county today at $65 a day. To Mr. Parrish's question about sending everybody out, building where we're at and then bringing them back, that would be great, but that would be millions and millions of dollars over the course of.
Speaking millions, what is the proposed budget?
Approximately 80 million.
So for 80 million dollars, let me get this straight. We can't design a jail to fit on two city blocks. And we're going to worry about, we're going to displace these people for a couple of million dollars worth of cost. And we're all guessing if it's 80 million, we're not going to stop there. Does anybody think if we're proposing 80, that it hits 80 and stops there?
You're on the finance committee. Why don't you take that?
Thanks, John. And I'm on the finance committee, and the project hasn't been driving the cost. The cost has been driving the project. We are, we are going to have a max of 80 million dollars. And that's actually including contingency monies.
Did a $12 million building. How do you stop it? I'd like to know that because I couldn't. I mean, if we're proposing.
80 million dollars includes contingencies.
But even at 80 million dollars, if you spend $2 million on buying those two blocks downtown, it's a rounding error. Next, one more question. You've got Canova Hornets now stirred up here. Who did you talk to at the city? Who at the city told you that they thought they might be willing to rezon this? Because you couldn't have gone this far without talking to somebody.
I'll take that, I'll take that question. I'll take that question. Again, Tom Berry, County Administrator. I'm the one that did the discussions with the city staff on the joint planning board. There is no guarantee, as again, I've said, that anyone has given us that this will be rezoned or this will be conditionally permitted.
Guarantee, somebody in power had to say, proceed. I just like.
No, that's not true.
So you really got this all stirred up with no idea whether you could even rezon.
Well, that, we have to go through a process.
I understand the process. I've done it before, but.
Well, if I could, if I could finish, though, this is conditionally approvable based on the zoning and the ordinances by the Greater Joint Planning Board. So there will be a findings of fact that will have report that will have to be generated, and that decision will be based on whether or not this particular use matches the zoning ordinances. We don't know that till we go through that process. It is a process, as you know well, it sounds like, that involves the planning commission as well as the planning board and a staff recommendation. We can't predict what any one of those groups or individuals is going to suggest. So that's why we have contingent, have put contingencies in the property and purchase and sale agreement to protect the county for those reasons.
All right, I appreciate it if you'd rethink your thinking, so good luck.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Tim Cooper. I live at 608 Robin Lane Southwest, near Irving Oaks tract. This is my first opportunity to attend a commission meeting as well as present to one, so bear with me. I think a lot of the people that I've contacted over the last several days will attest to I'm not afraid to talk. So you're going to have to bear with me. I started out this evening with a prepared statement. And at this point, I'm just putting it on the side here in a free flow. So keep your timekeeper, time watch on. Tell me when it's time to sit down.
I'll wait when it's five minutes.
All right, thank you. I could talk on many subjects, and most of those have been already touched on, so I'm going to try and refocus my thinking a little bit. It will be a little bit off topic, but it will lead back to the site selection. When you inherently make a decision to move your jailing facility remote from your judicial system, you adopt the very thing that was one of the key disadvantages in the justice planners thing, transporting people. transporting people. And there's a whole host of things that are in that. From liability to safety to risk of flight to cost, et cetera, et cetera. You adopt some different model of that. It might not be just carrying a few overflow people long distances, but it's gonna carry all your, all your detainees or a vast majority of them back and forth to the, to the judicial system. Uh, and that's cost. There's no question about it. My, my understanding is the street talk now numbers are a capital expense for this project about eighty billion. It's a million, excuse me. Uh, and an operating cost over thirty years of about four hundred million. When I look at that, that's a one to five ratio. And when that ratio is actually compared, it's like, well, you're sitting here squabbling over the difference between a hundred and fifty thousand dollars between two properties. Or this or that, it's, it's peanuts, it's within, to the noise level of the evaluation at this point. Has, has the police department developed a complete study that shows the complete cost of moving people back and forth?
I think that was directed at me. Um, the, the NIC, we did that program, but then it was discussed as the judicial planning took the transports from and to many of the areas. And yes, that was our number one issue is we would like to have it close downtown. That would be our number one goal. But what happened was is COVID. We had a few many disguised blessings from that. And we saw that they didn't have as many in-person visits or in-person court viewing. We have five to ten prob, approximately per week. Um, there possibly will be, uh, more in the future. But there are many other counties also out there doing the same thing in green spaces. And there are plenty policies to go after with transports for safety and security regarding the transports of inmates back and forth to the judicial center and back to the jail.
That, thank you. Mike couldn't answer my question, though. Have you done the study comparing the cost of that over thirty years versus the cost of having a facility downtown here, regardless of the cost of that? Where it can be, you can have a direct coupling between jail and judicial.
There is a little bit difference in cost, but one of the things is we have to move them, we have to move them. We have to have the same amount of staff to move them within the jail. And if we move them outside the jail, and there's gonna be an additional transport, transportation cost. I believe it's probably a little over a mile to our current courthouse. Which is gonna take a small amount of time, but we still need staff to move these people no matter what. So this would just be another layer to the movement of the individuals, and I don't think the cost would be that much more.
I don't think, that doesn't sound like a very precise number.
Well, I mean, until we start the process, you, you can't, I don't know how you would study it. I mean, there's, there's gonna be movement no matter what, like I said, so.
Yeah, which brings me to our next point. You've got an existing jail over here, and I'm relatively new to this. But it is your port hole into the judicial complex as well as I understand it. Okay, what's gonna happen to that building? Are you gonna maintain it and some kind of a portal that you complain that there's a Sally Way that's woefully lacking? What's gonna happen to the, the inmates or the detainees that come in here? Are you gonna maintain some lockup jails there waiting for court? Are, are you gonna Uber them back and forth at the will of somebody? Uh, are you gonna let that building just decay and fall down? There, do you have anything in your capital budget that actually shows what you're gonna do with that? Or are you so focused on this new jail that you forgot about what you have?
I'll defer that to county commissioners and what their plans are and kind of, uh, what their goals are in the future.
Yeah, it's certainly a good question. Uh, that's a concern of mine as a new commissioner. And just as, uh, we look at building a new jail, that was one of my first questions. What are we gonna do with the, the old jail? Um, you know, hopefully, um, we can figure that out, uh, with soon. Um, because, you know, at the earliest, the new jail will be open operational at the earliest twenty twenty-seven, which means that the old space would likely be operational, whatever goes in there, twenty twenty-eight. So we do have some time to figure it out. It's a good question, it's something that I'm definitely gonna be staying on top of.
Let me close with this. Actually, it has nothing to do with the agenda, it's just letting you know, it's not trying to toot my horn. I worked thirty-five years with a major oil and gas company. My last assignment was in the Republic of Kazakhstan on a major project that started out at the time of very close to where you are right now in this, in this planning process. Thirty-five billion dollars. As that project went through final, uh, detailed engineering and took on all the wishes of well, well-meaning influencers, stakeholders, we call them. That when I, at the time I retired from that project, it was forty-five billion dollars because wishes got turned into needs. And when I left, the project, financial as well as calendar clocks were still skyrocketing. I kept in touch with a few of my colleagues for a while. And one portion of that project, basically building a city, was shuttered because partners said the financial overrun of this is intolerable. They just refused to finance. And I really caution you, I really caution you, you need to step back and look at a bigger picture than just whether you're gonna get the Weebolt property or the Holmes property or this property or that property. And then worry somewhere down the road that you're going to get a CUP. Because as far as I can see, you don't get a CUP, you don't get a lost, you don't get a jail. I, okay, with that, I'm gonna conclude, and I'm gonna say, I really urge you, implore you that you need to rescind this decision on the Weebolt property. Not just delay it, not just table it, but rescind it. Go back to the table and, uh, rethink the whole steering committee idea or the whole site selection, because there's a tremendous amount of flaws in that. Uh, and there's no transparency in it. With that, I conclude, thank you.
Okay, this time I'm gonna speak as a resident and not as the president of the South Lake Irving Association. Um, I'm Richard Lehman, fourteen twenty-six Irving Side Lane, Southwest. Uh, many of you know me from, uh, previous life as an elected official, so I'm gonna kind of rely on that a little bit in my comments. Um, when this county campus was developed here in this area, the building that we're standing in, the other buildings that are in the area, um, I was on the city council. And at that time, the board had decided that any new buildings that they were gonna make, they wanted to have them in the downtown area. They wanted the campus setting. And therefore, that's why these buildings are down here. They wanted to keep the county government in an area that was somewhat contiguous. And, uh, so we have a campus facility and we went through the eminent domain process. And yes, there was some bloodletting that occurred, and I remember the neighbors not being real happy with us. And it is a very hard thing for a governing body to take those steps. I understand that, I've been through it. And we talk about the planning and the zoning. We went, I was on the, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, process that the county undertook back in the early two thousands. And we had people that were opposed to that because they didn't think that they were gonna contain, maintain rights to their own property. They thought we were gonna go in there as a county or as a city or whatever and tell them how they could live their lives and what they could do with their properties and stuff. And it's hard to have, you know, to try to convince people that we're trying to protect the area that you're living in. Because otherwise, somebody's gonna come here and they're gonna tell you what you can do with your property. Because somebody's gonna come here and they're gonna wanna have everything the way it was where they came from. That's not the way we wanna do this, is it? We wanna do this where it's, where it keeps the area that you have your governing facilities contiguous to one another. And I think the jail belongs in that same area as it has been. You pointed out to me that it's been there for thirty years. It's been a part of this downtown area for longer than that. And now it's time to consider keeping it down here, because this is where the county board, the county administration, the county offices are. It's, it's an unfortunate circumstance that you're dealing with, that you're being mandated to build this and that the county residents are going to be asked to foot half the bill. But I think it's, I think it's something that you need to consider for the community and for the services that are gonna keep them in the downtown area and keep the con, campus of, uh, atmosphere going. So that it's, you know, as we used to talk about, the one-stop shopping kind of a thing. Well, that's not exactly what they're doing. But you wanna have it to where there, you know, everything is, you don't have to go look for things. It is downtown, you can be sent downtown and it isn't hard to find. So please reconsider what you're, what you're considering. One other point is if I'm looking at a buildable land to build a home on, if it's a nice flat piece of land, that certainly does take away the cost for me to develop a new home. But now you're gonna look at a piece of property that's out there off of, off of Jefferson. Hopefully, it's not gonna be accessed off of Jefferson. Maybe you can find another way to access it, it will cut down some of that traffic. But, you know, it would certainly be nice if I could build a, if I could build my own, a new home on a nice flat piece of land. Um, if you take it off the tax rolls by putting a jail there, that's essentially what you're doing. So I ask you to consider that, because again, I do live out there, it's gonna impact me. But I ask that you consider how it's gonna impact the entire community and what can happen in the city for, uh, new homes, much needed. So thanks for your time. Again, thank you for indulging all of us in our comments. I hope you'll take all of them into consideration, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Schoenfeld. I live at eleven twenty-five Thomas Road, which is in your cute little picture of where the jail's going to go. It will be my first view out my living window every day. I used to work for the county, twenty-eight years with the county, four of which were spent as a corrections officer in the jail. My question is actually for you, I don't know you, I've never met you. What as of today is the inmate count in the jail?
Currently in the jail, we're at seventy-six and we are housing out of county sixty-nine.
Out of county sixty-nine?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're gonna spend eighty million dollars on a jail to house people from other counties?
No, 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 no. That's our overflow.
It's people we can't hold.
Okay, so you have people in other counties?
Yes, ma'am.
How many has, because I know we did it when I worked there.
Mm-hmm.
We housed four blocks upstairs of Hennepin County's finest. How many do we house?
They're all our Beltrami County inmates.
Has that been even before the DOC asked us to lower our rates or were we still housing for other counties?
We were never housing for other counties, we haven't been for a long time. Um, the only ones that we do house for is, uh, inmates that get released from prison. They're called DOC work release and they get released back into their own communities to help them find jobs and different areas in their community to help family supports and everything. So we'll have one, maybe three a month that we allow back and forth. And those are the only other ones that we house for.
What do you mean back and forth?
So basically, uh, if, if they get, uh, um, it, for instance, they get released out of prison. They will, uh, need to go look for a job. So they look for a job, they come back and forth, they, they're literally on work release and approved, uh, to be released. It's a, it's a re-entry program of the prison.
And how will that be handled once the jail gets moved out there?
That would be the same, the same way. We would allow them to go out to try to find a job. We ask them and give them, uh, certain goals. They need to come back with like three to four different.
No, I'm saying transportation-wise.
Transport.
Here's a little easier, because they do have access to, like she said, the resources. What are they gonna do out there?
So we have, the DOC allows bus tokens and they allows taxi tokens. And we have also provided quite a bit of that as well. And so with that, they have to come back in and they check back in with our program directors. So they have to give us proof of how many times they have a contact with a business owner for an application.
Understand the reasons we have concerns about traffic increase, about, um, just on any given day, let's say, whatever the visitation hours are. Do you know how much more traffic that's going to influx into that neighborhood? Which, like many have said tonight, we bought those houses. I've lived there for twenty-three years, almost twenty-four years. I understand you people need something, I understand that you need to build this jail. That is not the place. These are neighborhoods, these are where our kids play, these are where, you know, like you said, we have get-togethers. That will not happen anymore. I have neighbors right now, a gal put her house up for sale last week. It sold in a week. Then this hit. And now she's looking at losing her house sale because they didn't know this was possibly in the works. I've got neighbors of mine who I've been with, like I said, for twenty-three years, who have now told me, if this goes through, we're out of here, we're moving. I don't, who wants to look at a jail out there living in your window? Who wants to see a jail while their kids play in the yard? It just, it doesn't belong in a residential area and I really hope you reconsider, thank you.
Pardon me, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I apologize, but I just wanted to get, I wanted to get back with the last, um, gal. Um, there may be, there, I, and I know this isn't gonna change your minds and, and I get that. But I do want you to have an understanding of what jails look like. They're not, we, we, we have, we have some pictures. We have some pictures of currently built jails that we'd like to put up on the screen.
Can I just say something to that? You're missing the point. Right now, I look out in my front yard and I have trees, I have nature. I don't care how gorgeous it is, I don't, I don't, it doesn't matter to me. I go out at night, I can see the northern lights from my front porch. Do you think I'll be able to see it from my front porch after this is built? No. No, I won't. I mean, that, those are the reasons we moved there. Those are the things we love about it. I am five minutes from town if I need to be, but I feel like I'm fifteen when I'm at home. It is a quiet, peaceful neighborhood and I don't wanna look at a jail no matter what it looks like. I wanna see northern lights.
Hi, my name's Christy Anderson, I live at fourteen twenty-one South Lake Irving Drive. Um, I'll be brief, I don't like to speak in public, so, um, I just wanna speak for all the moms in this neighborhood of which there are many of us with young children. And I know that you've said mitigating transportation, but I want my children to be able to be outside without worrying about inmates possibly having a ride or not having transportation. And I know there are a lot of us with young children and I know that that is a concern for a lot of us. So I just urge you to reconsider. I understand that, that this needs to go somewhere, I get that. And I support it, I support that it needs to be built somewhere, but this is not the neighborhood for it. And I urge you to reconsider.
Um, Lindy Odegaard, live on Lake Marquette. Uh, wasn't planning to be here, came from the beach. Um, but as I was listening, just some things that I want to note. Um, there was one site that was kind of dismissed, it was two million dollars just to get the water and the whatever there. There were, I think you guys said, a hundred and seventy-six people that were notified about this coming in. That's not, we were not notified. Um, so being on Lake Marquette, further down on Jefferson Avenue, um, if our kids wanna bike somewhere, there are parts of town, we tell our kids they can bike. And there are parts of town, we tell them they cannot bike. Um, at this point, they're allowed to bike on Jefferson. You can talk about, um, mitigation and trying to make sure that there's transportation, but it's not a law. It doesn't have to, there's nothing that says specifically, there will never be an inmate that will ever be allowed. So the thing is, you build the thing and while things have changed and we couldn't get this and we couldn't get that. So the thing is, you build the thing and while things have changed and we couldn't get this and we couldn't get that and now they're being released there. And so now. That is a location that my kids can't bike anymore. I've grown up around that area. I've been able to bike as a kid. Um, when you look at town, there are values for a home in town and there are values for a home outside of town. There's a reason for that. People that live in town have higher crime rate. Like there are things that you know um with living in town. The fact that you're not going to see the northern lights because there are so many businesses and there are so many homes and things with lights on. Is a given when you buy that home. When you buy a residential home, you think you're going to be able to see the northern lights. You think your crime rate is going to be a little bit better. You think it's going to be a little bit safer. And so you take that two million dollars that was kind of dismissed and I know that your guys' job is hard. There is a lot of information that comes at you and you have your own personal lives. So it's really easy to have somebody go, oh, this is bad. Okay, check, move on. But you look at that two million dollars and you look at the hundred and seventy-six people that were notified, that's eleven thousand dollars per homeowner. How much do you want to bet those homes depreciate in value? A heck of a lot more than eleven thousand dollars. So you have to take the residents into consideration for the financial side of it. And look at the residency. I haven't done the math. I didn't come prepared to talk. But you look at the people that live in town. How often do they have a turnover in those homes? And how often do you have people living there thirty and forty years versus this neighborhood? How many grew up in that neighborhood, grew up very near to that neighborhood who have already lived there thirty or forty years? So you want to talk about changing a neighborhood? Change a neighborhood that already has turnover, that already, excuse me, already expects to not see the lights. And to have crime and have everything that goes associated with having a jail. You gave, which I found sadly comical, the reasons that you disqualified central school is because of zoning. And all the reasons that our location is also should be disqualified. Like I, I just, I couldn't believe that you gave those as reasons because ours is not an exception to that. Those are the exact same reasons for our location. We should be disqualified. And so I just, I hope that you guys look at everybody that has spoken and. Like I said, you, you set out notices to a hundred and seventy-six people. I don't know how many people are here. But there are people that didn't get those notices that are just a little bit on those outskirts that don't even know. And so. Looking, maybe nobody got notices. I don't know. Okay, I guess I thought somebody said that people were supposed to be notified within the area. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can correct a few things, because um there were no notices sent out.
Okay.
Okay, no notices. The noticing, some folks don't understand quite the process. The noticing will occur when the zoning. You know, if I, if I can't speak, we can't have dialogue. I mean, we've given you respect. Can't we ask for the same? Can we? I don't think it's unreasonable. This is difficult for the staff. It's difficult for the county board. I'm just saying, it would be. I'm just saying, it would be appreciated if you would extend the same courtesy to the staff and the commissioners.
Agreed.
There were no notices sent out, okay? So I don't know where you got that information, but you weren't singled out as not getting a notice for any particular reason. There was no notices sent out. Secondly, um, I don't know where you're getting your information or that, or um. In regards to the reason for not choosing central school, I don't believe we stated that it was because of zoning.
Commissioner Carlson did.
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking about earlier in the presentation. Because the reason that I recall is that the property itself was too small. And so then that precipitated a series of conversations as to whether or not you could combine it with the property to the south. Which was the ten or so homes and the couple of businesses that are there and take out Eighth Street. And then even then, as I recall, that was questionable in regards to the size of the, of the property being adequate. Because one of the things that has to be considered here is that the, the facility itself doesn't just have to meet today's needs. I mean, one of the reasons we're in this situation is because we don't have a place to expand into the future, right? So this, this facility has a shelf life. We, we think it's going to be thirty, maybe thirty-five, forty years. It's what we're programming. But we also want to make sure that there is adequate space so that when the time comes. You know, the people down the road don't have this problem again. That there's a facility that's there that would, does allow for some future expansion, so.
If I could address two things.
Sure, sure.
So yes, you are correct in what the central school, but he said that in order to expand to the north or the south or whatever the directions were. That's residential. That would require zoning this, that and whatever, which is already where we're at currently with this one. And the thing is, what you're saying is you want to uh build a jail facility that in the future can become a jail complex. Within our residential neighborhood. So it's going to be even larger and bigger and more menacing, um, the, the longer it is there. And the more opportunity to expand. And then when the time comes, how many homes are going to be annexed fifty years down the road? Because well, this is the jail now and it just, it will completely deteriorate the neighborhood. And I hope that you guys have seen that and heard that and will go back to other locations. And again, even if it's two million dollars more, I get we have to be fiscal responsible. Absolutely. I think the question about what's going to happen to the old jail needs to be answered before you start a new one. Because how many schools have we had that lay empty and we don't know what to do with them after we've built something new? But um also understanding that just because it gives you more money in your budget to build more. You're taking it out of our pockets when it's our home values and that's a huge part of where we raise our families as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Leonard, thirteen oh five South Lake Irving Drive Southwest. First of all, I'd like to say, even before this happened, thank you for serving on this committee and doing this. It's no fun. You're not getting rich by doing it. Uh, you do deserve our, you do deserve our respect, so thank you for doing that. That said, one of the issues and uh the individual just prior to me did bring up. You had your city, your county assessor here a little bit ago talking about a piece of property that you lowered the assessed value. Or the, the value of it eighty-seven thousand dollars or something. Well, we have a hundred and seventy-six homes and I think there's more than that in that neighborhood. If all of a sudden we start losing ten to twenty percent of our value that the taxes are not coming in. Has that amount been, been put into your numbers? Have you looked at that? Have you looked at what's that over thirty years? I also don't understand when, I, we're from Grand Forest, we're seasonal here. Uh, after the flood, I was on a couple committees when we looked at land that was taken out of. Uh, people couldn't build anymore along the river because of the flood issue. So we were on some committees to do, what should we do? We did a lot of beautiful park stuff. Well, one of the concerns was taking land away and we're not getting the tax dollars that they have in Devil's Lake when the la, when the lake would get bit larger. What happens here? You're taking some more land that has a taxable value. You're getting money on it. When I look at, when Richard talked about your downtown area, I was blown away when I saw what you have down here. Why does it not stay down here? I don't understand that. So I think I'd like you to consider the tax issue. The depreciation or the less values that you're going to get in our neighborhood because you can't be able to, they're not going, the homes will be worth as much. Take that over your thirty-year timeframe. I'm sure easily you're going to take care of the two million dollars that you'd have to put in infrastructure or something. Thank you.
Questions? I know I already took my time, but would it be possible?
Sure, there is one other person. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I have, just uh listening to the conversation kind of sparked a few questions in my mind. I know the criterion for the sites was really important, right? Because you have to develop how you're going to score objectively, how these properties are going, are going to be obsessed or assessed, excuse me. A little bit about me, I'm a pharmacist and so part of my job is to evaluate clinical studies and kind of sniff out. Um, opportunities in the studies uh before I make recommendations to providers or physicians on drug treatments. And so when I look at this process, I'm a little bit concerned when I heard the conversation earlier today and I just want to confirm. That there was a negotiation on the homes property, which is rated number three on your list. Which makes me question the entire process of what we've done here today. Can anyone tell me why that negotiation happened before any other property negotiations or please clarify if I've misunderstood?
One of the key factors of why we, why we looked at that property first was because we knew it was for sale. Whereas like the brick property was ranked number one. We hesitated, we didn't know that they would even consider selling and they didn't. They would not sell. And so that was, that was one of the first things that I recall uh being a criteria of why we looked at the homes property. Um, because we knew it was, was on the market or would be on the market.
But that wasn't listed in the criterion, correct? And that was our guiding principle?
I don't know if it was, I wasn't on the design committee. I don't recall if it was on the criteria or not, but that is one of the conversation pieces that I recall us happening. As well as it being highly ranked.
So my next question, which I alluded to in my statement earlier, but why was there no site selection committee? I, I read the jail steering committee minutes. I looked at the design and operations committee. Why was there no site selection committee as proposed as a best practice by the Department of Justice and National Institutes of Correction?
So Alyssa, there was a, a site selection committee and that was the design and operations committee was, was tasked with citing the jail.
So how much citizen input? I saw there was two representatives on there and when I looked at the attendance record, it was shaky at best.
Uh, no, we had uh pretty good, the, the, but the only person that never showed up was a um citizen. Um, not a board member, not a staff person. Um, and so, and it was unfortunate that um. We wished that they would have. Uh, so then we recruited. We sent out a request for more citizen. Participation because the citizen participation wasn't happening. And so we did finally in January, I believe. Um, get another citizen to agree to be on the committee that had some engineering background. Um, but we've met every two weeks since November. Um, many of our meetings went way over time. They were, they were scheduled for two hours. Uh, many of them went three and four hours. The first thing that we did in that committee was try to decide. What's the best criteria that we could think of that would help guide the board in making their final decision? And so that's what we spent, oh gosh, Calandra, how much time did we spend? Almost two months going through criteria? Um, and trying to.
On that same note, not to interrupt you, but thinking about the criteria, I saw that there was one criteria that was on neighborhood impact. And when I read the details about it, it was only based on the three parcels that are touching that property. There was no consideration for the light pollution, noise or traffic for any of the surrounding neighborhood. Can you explain to us a little bit about why that one criteria out of twelve was used for neighborhood impact?
Do you recall exactly, Calandra?
What I remember is the uh site selection had everything to do with the adjacent properties. And we did not take a radius, I don't believe.
Correct.
And it was just the adjacent is how that criteria laid out, if I'm correct.
Correct, yeah, and I, that's how I recall it too, that it was counting the adjacent properties and not a radius.
Alyssa?
Yes.
The, where do you, the light pollution piece of it, this isn't a state penitentiary where it's a, yeah, barbed wire and big lights and, and stuff.
Yeah, I.
What's that? Yeah, well, that, this isn't high school.
Question on that, I have not seen uh anywhere that I could find that the design or future designs have been. Put anywhere where the public can access them. Is that something that we can access to see what the future designs look like?
We just selected an architect to come up with preliminary designs, so that will be forthcoming, yes.
So I'm curious as to why we would select an architect and design this um before. Why wouldn't we do that before actually picking the parcel of land? Because that would determine the size, correct?
No, the, the way the process worked, and, and maybe Tom, you're on the committee too. If you, if you, if your recollection's better than mine, um, you're a lot younger. The uh. I, I think I'm going to defer, you talk about our timeline because your, your message on the timeline is much better than mine.
In, in what respect are we speaking on timeline though?
Uh, why, why we had Ryan McCarthy on board.
The architectural timeline, yes. So um, there's a number of ways to go through the project, right? Um, one of the ways that we did as a, as a design and operations team is we've been taking tours of other facilities. That have similar jail needs in regards to inmate capacities. Uh, same kinds of issues and challenges and that sort of, and you get a good, you get a good sense of what sizing needs to be. Um, in addition, we have a project manager that has been hired and been with the team for, it seems like a year and a half or so. Uh, who also has worked on projects like this and has sizing information. Justice Planner is the consultant we use that did the needs assessment feasibility study, has extensive experience in sizing. All of these data inputs came to, hey, you need a facility of this size based on the DOC requirements in regards to how much area you need per inmate that you need. And your inmate population has been projected out for, I think they projected out for thirty or forty years. So that's how it was sized. Uh, it wasn't designed, it was just sized. You need in order to meet the, the DOC criteria with this many inmates, you need this size facility. That's how the sizing was done, but it hasn't been designed, as we just mentioned. It was, it's only been uh it recently that we've hired the architect. Who now is going to help through the initial stages of the process, including this land analysis stage.
Okay, and my, my last question is, I know there's a property um owned by the city right now um over in Norris Court, over by the airport. Which had a very minimal impact to residents. I'm just curious, how did we decide which fifteen sites would be vetted and scored? Because it seems to me, and that map over there and the map you have in your hand, that there's several opportunities. And I'm not an expert in uh, you know, with some of the realtors in our audience that could um probably speak up even better than I could. But I'm just curious as to why the cutoff was made at fifteen and who ultimately decided which fifteen sites would be on there? Did you decide the criteria before we picked the sites or were the sites kind of in the back of our mind while we designed the criteria?
So Alyssa, that's a, that's a really good question and that, and it's exactly what we did. We didn't think about any properties upfront. We talked about criteria only. And then once criteria was set, we, we said about gathering all the information we could about what's possible sites. We talked with, I talked with your husband, the city planner. I talked with uh our own GIS, Kevin Warren. Um, we've talked with, oh gosh, I can't remember how many people. We've talked to some realtors. We, we, we sought input from everybody that had any idea of a piece of property that, that would be usable. The specific one that you're talking about, the airport, one of them's already, there was two. One was already sold. Is, is being sold now and the other one is, is not usable. It's a piece of property that looks like a crescent moon. It, it, and, and so you have little slivers down here that, that there's just no way to footprint a jail that we need to.
But it meets the acreage criteria, correct?
Yeah, it met the acreage, but it's not buildable for, for the way the footprint of a jail would have to go.
Sure. There is a lot in the industrial park or multiple lots. Was that explored at all as a possibility? Did we exhaust county and city owned land? Um, did we contact the state to see what kinds of surplus? I'm just curious.
You understand that it has to be within the city limits?
I do understand. I read the, the Minnesota state statute.
Good. Uh, with regard to um, what was the other property you talked about?
Industrial park.
Oh, the industrial park. Did you want to speak to that, Tom? You were.
Um, I can, I can speak to that. I did contact and I'm going to forget their name now, but it's like the industrial park. Group, whatever it is, the new industrial park center south of town. That was encouraged to us to go and evaluate. So um, I had several conversations and a meeting with a representative from that group. And um, they were not interested in selling the, the industrial park property to the county for the county's purposes. They said it wasn't designed that way. It wasn't meeting their vision for what the industrial park was. So, you know, again, we're.
All right. I, I appreciate the opportunity to, to ask the questions. Thank you.
Next person?
I, I, Misty Bray, five sixteen Beltrami Avenue Northwest. Jail front yard. I do have a couple questions. When, when it came to selecting a site, number one, and this is a question maybe Calandra you can answer. Right now, the state has brought our occupancy down to eighty at max, correct?
That's correct.
So my understanding is that number comes down to being determined based on the staffing.
That's correct.
So we're proposing to build this facility that we actually don't have the staff. So we're proposing to build this facility that we actually don't have the staff to even build. So let me, I'm in a, I'm in a bit of a different scenario here, I'm not part of this neighborhood. I ride my bike out there. I'm a part of this neighborhood. And what people aren't aware of is there actually are long haulers downtown who, we reside there, we stay there because it's what's affordable. I got, I had to sell my house because of the Sanford Center tax increase, it affected me. So one of the other questions, I, I think it's not, they're not feeling unrealistic about the safety of their children. I'm a single woman who lives downtown. One would think because I live close to law enforcement, I would feel okay. It's a two block walk from my front door to where I have to park. I live where I live because it's what's available in this town and I've lived there for quite a while because there's nothing available. You're proposing building this jail if the city will agree to sign off on those permits. There's people sitting here that were forced to have lines put in and extend, but they can't hook up because they don't have the capacity at the city water and sewer. They have northern township, if you paid any attention to the city. They can't hook in, they're furious because they're paying taxes and can't use it. How is it that the county commission is gonna get a clearance? This guy can't get a clearance to build a garage and we think we're gonna get a clearance to build a jail in a neighborhood where people should be thinking it's not safe. I am home by dark, why? Because contrary to what the sheriff's department thinks, people are not released to somebody. I had people reside across the street from my house because there's a live outlet. I had people come at me with electric power tools in the middle of the night. And I was dependent on an officer getting there without me being hurt. These people should be afraid. You should think more about how this is going to affect the light pollution, you're right, it is dark out here. It is darker on the jail. I know because I, I can see it every single day. I know that I have a problem across the street that I can't get the city to address either, and I know it doesn't fall here. But they are right when they say that this is going to be a problem, they're not wrong. I've lived in it for over 10 years. Because I have to. I'm not somebody that has a criminal history, that doesn't have a degree, I'm educated, I have a bachelor's degree. I've had a career. There are people that live where we live downtown or around here because it is what we can afford. Because we choose to stay living in this community because we love it. And then there's other people that have to sadly move away because they can't continue to live here. And I think that's exactly what you're creating right now, is a group of people that are having to say, do we have to leave? Do we have to move? Do we have to give up what we put our entire lives building?
It didn't get into be a long meeting. Um, I'm Tom Saicora, I live at 1601 South Lake Irving Drive. Um, I've been in the real estate business in Bemidji for 32 years and I was a real estate appraiser for 27 years. And two things enter into my mind when it, when we talk about the, the central school location. The, the properties to the south of that, I remember a good majority of the people who had invested in those properties, it was, that's what it was, an investment property for rental. And, and a good majority of them at that time invested it with the idea that it's a good chance that the city of Bemidji is gonna wanna take over that property. That was part of the equation of why they purchased it. So in fact, you go to those people and offer them intermittent domain and, and take over their properties, they, they think that was a great deal. Uh, and they're not putting a lot of money in those properties as you can see. So that, that's one angle that, that uh, I, I think is a plus for the uh, central school location. Um, the other one, uh, the Don Holmes, the Connor Francine Holmes um, property. Um, sometime after they passed away, I did appraise that property. And uh, if memory serves me, there's 135 acres of property. 137, uh, 137 acres in that property and uh, and you know, there is some low land there, but there is the, there's, there's three higher partials that uh, I know the Holmes is, I would refer to the one off of 10th Street, there's access off of that. That uh, they, they call it Buffalo Hill. And then there was uh, a close to 30 plus acres where the homestead is. And then there's also a nice, I don't know the exact acreage off, right off the road that goes into northwest Publin 20th Center. As you go into the 20th Center, the property would be on your right. And uh, so, a- a- and I know, I, I, that, that the the amount that, that you people are talking for the 17 acres of land that uh, you could buy the whole 137 acres from my homes is. Um, I, I tried to get Danny Holmes to come here tonight, but he didn't show up. But um, anyway, so it's just something to think about, I know there's some, some parcels there that are substantially larger. And uh, you know, and, and as the infrastructure, I don't think it's any more of a detriment than, than the property that we're at. Uh, by his city sewer and water. But anyway, I just want to bring that up, that there are three higher partials that are involved in the home's property. Thank you.
Um, Missy Dodds, 2331 Weegawas Drive Southwest. Um, Mr. Berry, I guess you're the one to ask, um, when it comes to the criteria, um, I'm by no means an expert, I'm an avid student, as I like to say, um, unlike Alyssa, who's an expert, she's farm D. Um, but anyway, um, because of things that have happened to me, I've, you know, understand site assessment to like, well, Riggs knows this much. Uh, but enough to, to speak a little of it. So my question is, um, what did you base the criteria on? Kind of like what Alyssa asked, but I'm asking like, in the school safety world, you know, we looked past K-12, we looked to the REM Center, we looked to the Department of Justice, uh, we have things, what did you use? You know, what, what were your resources for best practices based on, I guess? And I don't know, and then I would also be interested to know if you did a site assessment, like if Mr. Carlson went in and Mr. Sumner went in, I know probably that would have to be blocked out, but could I file a FOIA? And find, and to see the individual rankings, like where everybody, you can't do that, why? You didn't do that, so you don't, so there's no way to know that you didn't have any, maybe, and I'm not saying you personally, but since you said, um, but there can be bias, I mean, how, how do I know that it was evaluated? I mean, I just have to trust you, is that what you're? I, I, but I, I mean, I'm dead serious, because like if, if I go in and like, I don't know, one of the things I, you know, access control, I can go in and I've got best practices, I've got, you know, Department of Justice, I've got all these things with me. And what do you, Mr. Berry, what do you have that can show this is how we, we build a jail? I understand the need for the jail, I support law enforcement and I have to admit those three people sitting over there are absolutely amazing and had to put up with me for years. So uh, they, they totally get in heaven free. But I'm just curious as to how to, and, and what's a best jail practice today? How many years until that's outdated? I guess it's some questions I have and like, what, what are you, what government data, what, what are you basing all this on?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I fully understand your question, but I can talk to you about how the citing criteria was developed, maybe get there-
Okay, who is your expert that developed your site criteria? I guess that's my question.
Okay, so the citing criteria was developed by the design and operations subcommittee of the jail team.
Okay, what is their certification? Like these guys take a class called SEPTED? You probably are familiar with that, okay. So like, that's why we want law enforcement to come in and do site assessments for us.
I see where you're going.
What are the, I mean, you know, when I was a teacher, I had to have so many hours of math to be able to teach math. What uh, is the committee's expertise in evaluating a site for a jail?
So the criteria that was developed by the committee was done based on best practices identified from people who have done the projects citing before, including myself, and also the project manager with construction engineers who has decades of experience doing the same sort of work. And taking that information along with everyone else's input at the design and operations subcommittee and identifying what that committee believed would be important and objective criteria for evaluating sites. And again, what was mentioned earlier is that that work was done prior to the identification or even the application therefore of any of the criteria to that, which is also in itself a best-
I would like a list of your people. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's on the website.
It's on the web, no, no, not the steering committee, your, I can tell you I do pass K-12. I can tell you I do REMS TA, I can tell you I, I do the Department of Education, Minnesota School Safety Center. I want concrete evidence that what you, not you personally, y'all, put together is best practices, because when I look at the NIC, the Department of Corrections, the NIC rubrics, it looks totally different than y'all's. I'm not saying y'all wrong or nothing, but I'm just saying I need to compare it because there's like some holes there.
Well, I, you can compare it, but the information is on the website and so is the steering committee or members as well as the design and operations team members, which I think was one of your-
And you have their credentials on there.
Well, so just to be clear, you don't need credentials to develop citing criteria. You don't. I mean, that, I mean, you may not like to hear that, but you don't. In fact, to be quite frank with you, the board doesn't even have to use citing criteria. To be frank with you, the board could have said, we want to have a jail, we want to, in this location, and it could have taken that action. It didn't do that, of course, it developed citing cri-
Really?
No, it, well, if you want to debate that, you're free to debate it, but the point is, the point is, that's not what happened.
I guess the personal question I have for everybody sitting up there, um, how many of you want this across your street? It'll be across the street from me and my three kids and my husband, I struggle with PTSD, as you know. I am a victim of a crime. Uh, how many of you would want this to be across the street, this particular jail built across the street from your house? Show of hands, please. Seriously, I'm, you did great, did you get that? I mean, I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, but why are you running my life?
Well, you asked me a question.
Okay, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I have been to a number of the new jail facilities, that's, that's part of what our job is to do, and, you know, Missy?
Miss Dodds.
Miss Dodd. I've been to these sites, I've seen what they look like, we've talked to, we've talked to the people that have been involved with it. Um, they're safe, they're, they're just, it's, yeah.
They're safe enough that they would, you would be glad to put one near you or your family's neighborhood. And you would leave your grandkids, because I know I have grandkids, and you would leave your grandkids at home by themselves. I mean, do you understand?
Yes, sir.
I, I know, I know, but it don't bother me.
It's-
I ask that, y'all please reconsider, please get some more input. I, I know you, I'm not against the jail. I want law enforcement, I mean, good lord, they're the heroes of our community. But you know what? There's gotta be something better. And there's gotta be a way we can come together and, and I wish you would have been more open in, in talking with us, thank you.
I'm Georgia Erdman, I live at 2001 South Lake Irving Drive and have since of 1946. So I have some sense of the community and I feel pretty protective of it. But it seems to me that we have some real um, issues beyond our neighborhood and placement of the jail. One of them is a lack of communication with what's going on. Now, I, I'm not here to place blame, I'm simply saying that this has been a problem. And people expected to be notified and there were no notifications put out. I um, didn't know, I, I'm not very uh, wise when it comes to the computer. I didn't know how to reach the site that has all the information on it. I had a site that um, gave me some information but had no members of any of the committees. And so I didn't think that that was available to me. Um, there's just a number of areas that I think if you are interested in the community, which is what we are all about, including the inmates in the jail. We want to provide the services for the community so it is a healthy, well progressing, growing community. And this community has taken a few hits. So I think it really is very important that you get on adequate communications, that you get on being um, knowledgeable about what it is you're doing when you're building a new jail in a community, no matter where you're going to put it. Where you put it is less important than what services it's going to provide. Are we just going to continue building bigger and bigger and bigger jails? Or are we going to look at how we're treating our youngsters? How we're treating the citizens? How we're respecting the community as we do this project? Thank you very much for your time.
Mrs. Erdman, I really appreciate your question, thank you very much for that. I, what I'd like to do is have Calandra talk about some of the programming that we can't do right now because of the jail and the programming that we've started to do, um, and how we want to expand on that, because that was a great question that you asked. I, I really would like us, if you could give us a second to talk about that. I think it's really important that you, that your question is very important.
Currently, thank you, currently that we have for programming, we have a full stream of programming Monday through Friday. Um, it's constant with uh, AA Religious Services, uh, indigenous classes, talking circles. Uh, currently, we have also a reset programmer who is 100% focused on a reentry and which I wish I could clone her, she hides her cape very well. Um, she is working with as many individuals as possible. Uh, I'd like to get at least four more of her when we get somewhere else in a bigger facility, we put her in a closet, so, but it's workable. Um, she is inside and outside focused, she is able to work with these individuals up to 60 days afterwards if they still need more help. Um, she's able to provide services and contact them with other helps in our community. Uh, we also have, it's called an Ember program, we are teaming up with Sanford and they are providing uh, two LADCs, peer support, QMHP, which is a qualified mental health professional and treatment specialist as well. And that is six individuals that is um, going to take our um, unprecedented program that is not around in the state of Minnesota, we have not, we don't have that yet, which we're very thankful and it's supposed to start in August and September. E stands for embrace, embrace the past circumstances, M motivate, interest and enthusiasm and making a change for the present. B believe, hold on to the truth that you can change the future. E is execute the individual plan that was developed. And R is to remedy and continue to move forward with your plan and eliminate the past of developing your future. And Ember is truly a spark of a dying fire. We hope to reignite that spark in their life because they are hurting, they're hurting, they're hurting community. And we hope to put that impact for them for the future. And if we can just change one person's life, we can change many family members in the future. Thank you.
May I go now?
I'm, I'm sorry, I just thought your question was very important. So, so does that mean you didn't want to hear the answer, or I just, okay?
I didn't say that.
Okay. Thank you for your question.
Robert Maeve, I live on Harrison Court, uh, I am not a public speaker, I'm one of the worst at it. Uh, I just want you guys to know the impact that this is gonna have on our life, our lives. And I heard Ms. Allen say that, you know, it's an inconvenience to the inmates and stuff and, and all that stuff. But what about the inconveniences to us as property? But what about the inconveniences to us as property owners? We have rights to enjoy our property. And I think you guys are taking away those rights. We do daycare. We do foster care. We actually thought about selling our house and the one south, because we're getting to that age. It only took a couple of weeks, not even, took a week. We had offers. People wanted to buy our house already. It fell through. We decided not to sell. We felt that we could save a little bit more, make a little bit more. Felt that we'd be able to sell our house for a little bit more. That's not the case anymore. I think that our houses, it's gonna be hard to sell it. I'm hearing other people that have a promise to sell in our house. It's gonna be really tough for us. And who's gonna want to bring their kids to daycare when you have a jail right next door to you? You know, it's a huge impact and I wish that you guys would take the time. To find somewhere else. And be the people that we elected you guys to be. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I also hate speaking in public. My name's Teresa McGuire. Teresa McGuire, 2120 South Lake Irving Drive. Our neighborhood, I want to, I want to speak to your hearts. That's why I would like to end tonight. Is a little piece of the American dream. I live right across from the Roger Lehman Park. And I know there's a lot of you here that are my age and you probably remember when we were young. We were able to walk to the park alone, ride our bike to the park alone and play and not worry. That's how our neighborhood is. I see that out my window every single day. So all of you who have little kids, just know I'm watching out the window, watching after your children every day. That's special. That's rare in our country. That's rare in our world. And I think we should be focusing on preserving neighborhoods like that. Instead of destroying them. And just remember that every decision you make has a ripple effect, one way or the other. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Deputies, Sheriff, respected staff. My name is James Dodds, 2331 Wigwas Drive Southwest. I strongly oppose this site. Because I have a family. I reside this side for the last 19 years. I moved here because we saw this as a potential dream home, a place that we could raise our family. And in a sense, you can take it away so quick. It's, it's so hard to fathom now. It disgusts me to, to some point. Sorry, sorry. Let's just, let's, let's just, I. I have a petition here. Do any of you want to sign it? It opposes the site for the jail. And I have probably 300 people that have signed it so far. In the community. And it's growing. It's gonna get bigger. I promise you. Now I have a couple of questions real fast. I wanted to ask. I wanted to go back to the, somebody asked about the light pollution. In my job with, in my job, I have traveled. All over the state. Frequently I visit 46 counties. I have driven over 900,000 miles with my job. I have visited many jails. I've seen many jails. Talk about light pollution. Some of them are really bright. They are. How many of you seen the Crooks in jail at night? You haven't even seen it. I have sit in that. I have sat next to the Crooks in jail many times in, in my meetings with my job and watched the lights come on and it's like, wow, what happened? Some of them are designed with law lines, so I won't discredit that. I wanted to mention the fact of the singular level. Jail design. Is Graham Rapids jail design more of a stack design? Does anybody know?
No, they're going to be in a, a lower level. The reason why they're putting on that upper level, it's all the new courtrooms. Because it's a law enforcement center and a jail. And there's judicial, and I want to say it's three courtrooms on the top. And just, just to add, if you don't mind me just adding, and the reason why the, they're requesting to build a single level is. All of the inmates require us to have seen them. It's a 30 minute check. We have to see their eyes, their face, everything, making sure that they're rising. And falling in their chest for breathing. And then some are 15 minute checks depending on how their mental health state is. So with the multiple level floors, it's staff intensive. And so that's kind of why DOC is requesting that.
Thank you. Couple more questions. 15 sites. That seems like. A lot, but there's a lot more on that map. There's a lot of potential on that map. There's dots everywhere. Why wasn't more looked at? And the 15 sites, I know for a fact, you never even reached out to some of those landowners. Why is that? How can you evaluate and place a site in consideration when you didn't even reach out and communicate to the landowner? I think it was rigged to make it look good.
So can I answer that?
Yeah.
So thank you for the question, Mr. Dodds. Appreciate that. What we decided to do was follow the process of selecting criteria that we felt was important for the site of the jail. Once that was done, then we invited, advertised, not through newspaper or radio, but. We went out and we actually, we sought as many locations as we could find. And then apply each of the, each, each location to the criteria. The reason that some people would not have been contacted that were on that list is because their score was so low. That it was just, that it just didn't make sense to go to them first. It made more sense to go to the highest ranked and work our way down. That's why.
And we did negotiate on five of the 15, Mr. Dodds.
Can you repeat that?
We did negotiate on five of the 15 properties, so. That's a pretty high percentage that we actually negotiated on. So we may not have called them all, but we actually negotiated on five properties or at least tried to, to purchase five of the properties.
Administrator Barry mentioned working with other entities and working with city staff. He didn't identify them. I do not remember the city government authorizing staff to cooperate and help you find these sites, but.
Well, more things. Mr. Dodds, I personally met with Mr. Carlson of the Joint Planning Board, the city, I call him the city planner. I'm not sure exactly what his title is. But I personally met with him and said, what properties do you have for us? And he listened and he, and he gave us some properties that we hadn't had before and they got added to the list. Every property that he recommended got added to the list.
Okay.
That was not mentioned, that was not mentioned. And when I had the discussion with him, that was not mentioned.
The fact of the notices. Did notices go out to people? And we said, no.
I'm, I'm sorry. I still don't recall. Are you, are you referring to tonight's presentation that I gave? Because I, I'll pull that up while we're talking and I don't recall having anything like that in there, but I'll look again.
Lindy, that, I believe that was James Ravnikar that brought that up. I was taking notes and, and he, I believe he's the one that brought that 176 homes within the notification area. He was the one that mentioned that, not our slide, I believe. I don't know where he came up with that number or if it's even accurate.
If, if, I'm going to speculate, this is speculation. He may have said that because if it. If, if the process continues and we go for a conditional use permit or a rezone. Then, then a notification would have to go out and I'm just maybe guessing that that's the notification.
That was the comment that I was gonna make is he was talking about a previous process that he was part of and how notification went out for that. It goes to adjacent property owners and a radius of people when it gets to the Joint Planning Commission and Joint Planning Board.
The, the number of 176 homes and 223 properties came from. Our community looking at the map and seeing a 200 or 2,000 foot diameter circle and seeing what's in that. Just for your information. But notices, so are you planning to send out notices? When will you send out notices? You're gonna build a jail and not send out an official notice?
Notice, notice for what?
That you're building a jail in our neighborhood.
That's part of the Joint Planning Commission prop, those notices are going out when they're, when the hearing comes up for the Joint Planning Commission and the Joint Planning Board. So the notices will. Next month, I believe it's at next month's meeting. So the notices are supposed to be sent out from the Joint Planning. Board because of the conditional use permit request.
So there was no intention of any prenotice coming from the county commission about this. My neighbor for 19 years. Built the largest construction thing in, in, in the entire state and it's in bridge. Before they started their project, they got out in foot and they pre-told us what they're planning to. They communicated with the community. Everybody in here was communicated well. They came out and talked to you on foot. They came out and talked to you by letter. And this is before they even applied for their permits. And we know it took six years for them to get their permits.
Mr. Dobbs?
Yes.
We, we need to move on.
One more thing. U.S. Department of Justice jail selection criteria. Decisions made in early stages of a project have the most profound effect on designs and operation. Site selection is among the most important early decisions because it can be a continuous political issue. And because the site selection will affect the operations and the cost of the new jail now and in the future. The time, effort and dollars spent on the site evaluation and selection will pay large dividends for a long time. Site selection can be done successfully in a public forum with the active participants of elected officials, professional engineers and architects. Voters and representatives of other public entities. Conducting site evaluation and selection in a public process, a public process, transparent process. Is the best way to achieve a workable consensus within a reasonable timeframe. One last thought to the. The jail in, in 1886. Do you know where it was? The jail in 1889. Jail in 1902. The jail in 1928. Jail 1989. It's always been downtown next to the services they need. To allow easy, you know, it makes sense. It has never been outside. Now, some counties. Have looked at their jail building process and they have went outside the city limits. And I heard somebody say. It's gotta be built in the city limits. But that's true. Mr. Lehman said, we built a school outside of city limits in the city annexed it. So that's, that's a false statement. We can look outside if we had to, just a little bit. Okay, I will wrap up. Sorry. It's a very emotional topic. Again, if anybody would like to sign my petition. And you guys are welcome to sign it too. Thank you.
Okay.
Just want to clarify a question and may, maybe you can. Where is the information on the state, the Minnesota Department of Corrections that the jail has to be in city limits? And I asked this because I asked the same question to the city council and they said it did not. And I couldn't find it. So if you could give direction to all of us, that would be great.
It's a state statute and I do not have that with me right now. So, is it on the website?
I just, I don't believe the statute is on our website. No.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Yeah, I just want, I want to clarify, just one thing too, if you could.
I think we're getting really.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. It's, it's, it's one question.
One question.
One question. And I don't know if I can address any of you specifically or is it just everybody? Is that?
Pretty much everyone.
Everybody? Okay. Well, I know it's your district there where the jail is going in.
Right.
Uh, Richard, I just wanted to clarify. You evaluated this, this property, chose this property and I think Alyssa said it, maybe somebody else, by taking into consideration three properties that are adjacent. Three, is that correct? In the scoring? Is that correct? Adjacent properties. Three. Adjacent, not three, all contiguously adjacent properties. Which is three. Three residential properties. If that's what's adjacent to this facility, because it was different for every single property. That is correct. Do you think that's fair to all the people in this room? I'm asking you gentlemen, do you think that's fair? It's kind of what I thought.
Yeah. We're gonna need to wrap this up for tonight and. And that, we're gonna need to discuss as a board, what we, what our next step is.
Mr. Chair, just one other thing, because I know that the public has made a lot of comments tonight or suggestions that, you know, the county hasn't been transparent. You can't find the information, all that stuff. I just wanted to make a quick plug for the county's jail project webpage. It has, it has the information I think a lot of you were kind of looking for. And I think we can bring it up here just really quick. If you go to the county's main page and, and you go to law enforcement and then you click on. Is that the main page there? There you go. So if that's the county's main page, you just scroll to the left and if you click on law enforcement. Then it'll bring you to the sheriff's office webpage and then under that says jail project. And I just want everyone to be aware of this. Like this is where the project overview, committee structure, the, the reports. The presentations, the milestones, the timelines, the lost application, Minnesota studies. For the, for the loss, the special meeting, the architectural contracts. And under that, each of the subcommittees and the meeting minutes, also just about every single quarter for the last three years, there's been information put out in the county's newsletter. Maybe you get that, maybe you don't. There are all the newspaper publications so that you're aware. There's lots of information inside of that. Then additionally, separate of all of this, there's a lot of information certainly. In the commission's agenda board packets and also the meeting minutes, which is on a different webpage that you get that through going to the commissioners page. But there is a lot of information. I'm not saying it's necessarily easy and we would like to make it as easy as possible for you all to get to this information. And certainly if you have questions about it, you know, reach out to the staff. We can help you get that.
Did they purchase the agreement for this property on the site?
Yes, there it is.
Why did it date on the 22nd? You said, May 23rd, the county approved it.
Because the offer was made by the county on the 22nd. It was counterapproved on the 25th, I believe, and the board needed to take action on it. And that was the quickest time that the board or the next time that the board could take action on, on it. So now these public processes take time. When you're working with an elected board, you have to schedule meetings according to the statute notification requirements. And so there's going to be a delay between when you first enter in it. But the purchase and sale agreement was contingent on board approval, so. But the purchase and sale agreement was contingent on board approval, so. And that that's typically how that's done. You want to address?
Oh, there was, and there was the agenda bill that was here, but the packet was here that had everything in it and that was correct.
That that was the error, which would of course send you to the wrong, to the wrong site. But if you'd, and and you wouldn't necessarily know how to do this, but if you click on the work meeting and board meeting packets, those.
Unfortunately, that link was incorrect, it was a mistake by somebody. Down below, but the links down below were accurate, the work meeting and the current, or complete work package, most current, both were accurate.
Were there any sites looked at outside city limits around here?
Yes, yes.
The highway department site was one of those.
Yes, the county owns some, I think it's called the impound lot off of Adams, on the west side of Adams Avenue, right next to the county highway department. And that was looked at, but because of it having to be annexed because of state statute, it was that was, if for our criteria, it was disqualified because it was not in the city limits.
Thank you, everyone, we do appreciate your comments, thank you very much.
All right, public hearing is closed. Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Reports or anything, or Adam's here.
We can always discuss this motion if you want.
I'll second that motion to adjourn. All right. I'm sorry, say that again, again. Yeah.
Aye.
All right, it's supposed to be in July.